Very good evening, welcome to the November 5th, 2025 Sister City Council Workshop. First up on our workshop tonight is building hardening discussion with our planner Matt Martin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors and those in attendance here tonight. Either in person or online, Matthew Martin, Principal Planner, City of Sisters Community Development Department. I'm joined by Krista Appleby, Assistant Building Official with Deschutes County Building Safety Division, a critical partner as we explore adopting amendments to the the building code to address wildfire hazard mitigation, in particular, Section R 327 of the Oregon Building Code, Oregon Residential Specialty Code. So tonight's purpose is to prepare for a scheduled public hearing on November 19th to consider adoption of an ordinance that would implement R 327 for all new dwellings and their accessory structures within the city limits that are subject to the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. So I offer these comments in supplement to the SAF report that was presented or provided in the meeting packet, and I welcome any questions or comments throughout as we prepare for the public hearing. Purpose or overview would be to provide background on what we've done to date in discussing R 327, a brief overview of what building hardening and R 327 works to achieve, some discussion on financial considerations of adding these code provisions and standards for the construction of those dwellings and accessory structures, and then what our process would be moving forward. The genesis of this is the direction provided by City Council and through the goals of adopting and implementing building hardening standards through the municipal code. So that's what brings us here today. It's a broader effort to provide wildfire mitigation measures and create a foundation for a more resilient community in the event of a wildfire. So previously adopted defensible space standards as well as other measures, including wildfire mitigation measures for city-owned properties, et cetera, to address that priority and that goal. We met with you back in July to particularly discuss R 327. We have discussed building hardening on several occasions previously. So this may is a review or refresher as we go into the public hearing. But there on July 9th, we discussed in more detail what building hardening is, the provisions of R 327, what we had locally on the books currently to address wildfire standards or building code standards, and where are opportunities for implementing additional standards. At that time, because of the repeal of the statewide wildfire hazard map, that that map and any implementation of R 327 were tied directly together. So removing the map from consideration removed the opportunity for local adoption of R 327. So it took action on the state level. Since July 9th, the state has acted and the Building Codes Division has adopted temporary rules that are set to go into effect permanently January 1, but opens up the opportunity and pathway for this local adoption of R 327, independent of any map or provisions related to that. So with that adoption of those rules, now's our opportunity to take that action as desired by the city. So quick overview of building hardening, R 327. Kind of go hand in hand, building hardening is the structural elements that make a structure more fire resistant and hardy and resilient in the event of a wildfire in proximity to the structure or if it were ember shower, that it more resistant to those embers taking hold and igniting the structure. Building hardening also is the combination of the structural elements, but also the defensible space. So it's a combo, the benefit to the resiliency of that structure. So built into R 327, it addresses several elements of the building design and structural requirements, as noted on the graphic here, from roofing material to gutters, exterior walls, the ventilation for the attic as well as foundation, walking surfaces such as decking, and the glazing and fenestration of windows to provide fire resistance or materials non-combustibles that again make the structure more hardy. Any questions about those elements before we speak past it?
Just for clarity, the note at the bottom that it does not apply to commercial development, and I was aware of that, is there anything to prevent us in the future from applying hardening standards to commercial development should we choose to do so as a city?
There may be opportunities, and so we can explore both with the Oregon Building Code. If similar to the Oregon Residential Specialty Code, the state may take a path to adopt similar standards to commercial environment. So we can evaluate and monitor that. I don't know that there's anything proposed at this time, but amendments and updates are ongoing. But we can look at also design standards. So instead of applying building hardening through building code, we'd look at design standards through our development code that requires particular materials, design elements to be incorporated into commercial structures.
Because I think that in the walkthrough that I had with fire officials of our downtown commercial area, it's very interesting that there are a number of things that would make it very difficult to contain a fire, should it get into some of those blocks. And that's something that I think as we move forward as a community, we really need to address, not just for residential, but also for our downtown commercial and other areas that are commercial areas within the city.
Absolutely. So we can explore that moving forward. I do want to highlight that, again, this is the Oregon Residential Specialty Code, and in this particular case applies to those new dwellings and their accessory structures that are subject to this code. So in general, those are your single-family dwellings, duplexes, triplexes. But then it gets into kind of a gray area and it's what the design elements, the vertical construction, et cetera, that would fall under that code. So I want to use this opportunity for Krista to elaborate on kind of generally what the types of dwelling units and that are, this would be subject to, or perhaps not.
Sure. Thank you. Krista Appleby with Deschutes County Assistant Building Official. As Matt said, the R 327 is applicable to what falls under the Residential Specialty Code, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, also known as duplexes or attached ADUs, townhomes of a certain construction design that are stacked, and that can be three or more in a row. There's also a newer housing type under the Residential Specialty Code that's a, what are they called? They call it a stacked attached dwelling. So you could have four dwellings in a building that this code would apply to if they were two down below and two above. So two stacked attached for a total of four dwelling units. Your traditional mixed-use buildings that you have some new ones of where there's commercial on the bottom and a couple apartments up by, that falls into the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, otherwise known as commercial, and that's the dwellings that it would not apply to. Does not apply to manufactured structures. Those are head standards that the building code does not apply to. That's a federal standard. I think that's about it on the dwellings. And then any new accessory structure, unless it's one of the permit exempt sizes, R 327 would apply to.
And then point of clarification on multifamily complexes, the larger structures, understanding that falls under the commercial code under particular design.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a nuances. You could have, you could have a four, five plus townhomes all attached, and those might fall under the residential code and then R 327 would apply. Some of your current apartment buildings, I think Hayden Homes maybe has some in the last few years where there are multiple units on a floor and there's multiple floors, that collection of residential units is a structural, a commercial structural code, and that would not apply. So some of your residential uses are going to fall into the commercial code and some are going to fall into the residential code, and not every residential use gets R 327.
To go back to what you were saying, Gary, you know, I'm in the business a bit, and I think we'll definitely have to go out on our own, so to speak, to capture some of those nuances that they're discussing because obviously with the R 327 we're considering tonight, we're considering it as a whole, as a one-stop shopping using the state code. We're not changing anything else in it. We're not nuancing anything there. It's just adopting the Residential Specialty Code that they've created for us. So to take that to the next step will be another go-around of different things, and it'll be much more intensive in the sense that we'll be creating language that no one has.
Yeah, and when I think about the discussion we're going to have later on this evening about UGB expansion and the types of construction we hope to see in some of those areas, I'm a little concerned about having a large development where we have all of the single-family and maybe duplex homes meet building hardening standards and also having defensible state standards around them, and then having a multi-story apartment complex sitting right next to them that doesn't. It strikes me as a hole in our protection envelope.
I can understand that.
No, I'm sorry. But commercial, when you get into the commercial world, there are more, it triggers more fire safety measures, not maybe to this level, but, and I'm not familiar with that. Can you speak to me?
Yeah, I was about to jump onto that one. So in the commercial code, there are some built-in safety features. The closer you get to a property line, then you start after having fire-rated walls. That's, that's one of the options for R 327 is if you don't have certain materials on the outside, you have a fire-rated wall. So the commercial code already takes that into account based on proximity to other buildings and to the property lines. The fenestrations, the window glazing already meets of commercial already meets what R 327 requires. Generally speaking, most commercial buildings use fire-resistant or non-combustible materials already, metal siding, fiber cement siding, masonry. Those are the same kind of materials R 327 requires. The only thing I can think of that isn't completely similar would be ventilation openings.
Thank you. This helpful?
Yeah, and acknowledging, and I'm not saying that you're overlooking the benefits of if we have the residential construction in proximity of these commercial buildings, we'll be built to the higher standard and provide, we'll be able to be more resilient in the event of the fire or limit that fire run through the neighborhood and have a collective cumulative benefit with the structures in proximity to each other. But duly noted. So do want to get to the acknowledge that there are financial considerations, that there is an increase in building costs associated with adding improved or higher standards to a structure. State Building Codes Division had previously put out a summary and an analysis of that additional cost as, and then recently Headwaters Economics has produced a similar report, not specific to Oregon like the Building Code Division report, but a similar analysis of kind of standard building practices and higher standards. And the increased cost fell into the range between 2% and 11%. I know that that's a relatively large gap, but the variables are the type of construction, the cost of materials at the time, so the complexity of construction and the add-on features that you may want within that structure. But generally, we're seeing between Headwaters and Building Code Division, it's on the lower end, that 2% to 3%, but just want to acknowledge that there's additional cost, but a benefit to the replacement cost that you may have in the event of a fire. And also want to note that, as Krista's acknowledged previously, is that many of these standards are already being adopted in construction today from the asphalt composition, shingles, the cement or hardy plank type of siding, higher standard windows. So people are already choosing based on longevity of the product or a desire to have a more hardy structure, so implement on their own. So there's not going to be the dramatic increase that could be perceived.
I remember seeing that when we did the tours of the Woodlands and Sunset Meadows this summer. Like they were already incorporating a lot of these things, which was really nice to see. I didn't have to, but.
Yeah, I can attest to that also. I think the biggest range in price is probably the roofing materials. There's a lot of different Class A materials, asphalt comp, shingles are, can be fairly inexpensive if you want to go full metal. It's quite expensive, so there's a big range of price there. But I would say it's probably less, much less than 11%. I think that that's just part of a range. I think it actually is probably more in the 2% to 3% range because so many of those materials are already being used. I mean, R 327 is going to make it so shake roofs are no longer good enough. Nobody's doing shake roofs anymore anyway, in general, except maybe on the occasional, you know, hunting cottage out in the middle of nowhere. So here in town, they just don't happen anymore. So there's no real cost increase of those materials that are already being used on a regular basis.
So now we get to what the process looks like for adoption. R 327 specifically states that it's through adoption by ordinance at the city level and emphasizing, as Councilor Preeton noted, that we are, our options are to adopt the code, the R 327 wholly or in its entirety, or not at all. There's not an opportunity to kind of take from a menu and select different elements of it. So it's an all or nothing consideration. So that ordinance which we bring forward on November 9th, conducting that public hearing. I do want to note, here's a point of excuse me, November 19th. Thank you. That, I want to highlight in a point of discussion, maybe some direction from council or something to think about come the 19th. Ordinances are typically effective, if not adopted by emergency, 30 days from adoption. However, with this being a building code provision, we may want to consider a phase-in period prior to the code being mandatory in design to provide an opportunity for education to the building community, an opportunity to adapt to this new code provision, and also recognition that there may be projects in process now that may be nearing completion that if we were to adopt on a shorter timeframe, that may require a significant redesign of the building, adding to time costs and other considerations by the designer and the contractors.
Matt, on that point, so for projects that are already in process, at what point do they not have to make changes?
Those that have been applied for prior to the effective date.
Applied for
Building permit.
Building permit. So, okay. So I see. So if they were in like the design phase before applying for the billing permit, those are the ones that we would be giving a little bit of extra time for? I just want to, I was just trying to understand.
Yep. So looking at it as a goalpost, we're not going to move the goalpost. So if you've applied for the building permit prior to the code being mandatory, then you're subject to the prior code. But anything after would be subject to the newer standards. And just recognizing that with building code updates that happen on a regular basis, a standard practice within the building code world to provide. So typical schedule with the Building Code Division is adoption in effective date of October 1 with a six-month phase-in period with it being effective, or excuse me, mandatory come April 1. That's that opportunity to adapt, educate, and get your projects in line to be subject to that new code. During that interim time period, someone can voluntarily design their project in compliance with the standards, and then be reviewed subject to those design standards. So just wanted to offer this as a chance to, for the building community to adapt and integrate the standards.
Based on your experience with the county and also your experience, how often do we see when there's going to be a significant change in the code occurring date X down the road? Do we see a huge influx of permits attempting to work their way around the additional cost or design necessary to meet the new code? I mean, is there disadvantage to providing that long of a window? Or I know it's a standard, but that means nothing to me. I really want to know what's best for the community in the long run. So is it, in your experience, something that occurs or really doesn't?
It's a fair question. I would say we get the biggest rush of permits being submitted before fee changes.
Yeah, I respect that.
But we do, I would say with energy code changes, we tend to see a little bit more.
Last year, last year?
Yeah, see a few more permits get rushed in before an energy code change, but in general, not a significant bumper.
I would say that most of the, it's mostly the production builders that build many at a time. I think that there was a case a couple of years ago when the energy code changed that, you know, like the day before, about 50 permits came in all at the same time, applications right before it. But I think for much of the building that happens here in Sisters, last, I think we have 24 residential structures so far this year. It's not going to be a race to do that, especially considering UGBs coming up, annexation processes, we're not going to have a huge, huge amount. Obviously, there's construction going on, but I don't think it's going to really change a whole lot in, within the city limits of Sisters. We just don't build that fast and that many at a time. So out in the county, obviously, that's a different thing or in the bigger cities that are going through the county.
And there's a strategy in aligning it with the mandatory compliance of other building code standards of the April 1st because it's a timeline and a date that the community is familiar with. So instead of druggling two different timelines for effective and requirement, they will have been fully oriented and ready for code changes on that same date. So that's why April 1st has been selected.
It's a known date. Some of the larger production builders, yeah, it is a special day, April Fools. Some of the larger production builders, you know, they bulk buy products so that gives them time to get new orders in for what might be needed for R 327 if they don't already use it. It's a number of things to consider.
It's a great point.
Can I ask another question? Are there any other cities that have adopted these standards at this time?
So since August and the new rules coming into place, no other communities within the state of Oregon have moved forward with adoption of the code. So we're at the forefront there. I understand that Deschutes County is considering adoption as well as city abend. But beyond that, no new adoptions, but the previous adoptions by City of Ashland, Grants Pass, Medford remain in effect.
Here we are again.
We couldn't really do anything until January 1st anyway, right?
With the temporary rules in place, we can and will take action.
The thing you were kind of suggesting the April 1st, you know, but we really, we couldn't do anything before January 1st anyway. If we were like, we want to do it tomorrow, we probably would have to wait till January 1st.
We could do an emergency suspend.
Yeah, so we have the standard 30 days without an emergency. Theoretically, you could adopt and have it be effective the following day, which may have its challenges.
As an option, so.
So
Interesting situation.
So your recommendation is April 1st?
So an effective at 30 days and then a mandatory compliance April 1st is our recommendation. And during that same phase-in is an opportunity to, we'll be reaching out the community, acknowledging the building community to highlight the adoption of the code, provide educational opportunity and look for those to voluntary comply and design their buildings as such.
Most of these dates we're talking about are before fire season, so I'm thinking.
I'm thinking the same thing.
You know, I think that being a good partner for the building community as best we can and trying to keep it standardized instead of pushy.
I believe for me, the issue is that we don't have a lot of available land, there's not a ton of building going on. I'm comfortable with it. If we were in one of our building spurs like we had two or three years ago where there was a lot of permits being pulled, I'd be pushing for an earlier adoption just because we'd have fewer houses in our community that didn't meet the code and the standard. Because the sooner we get these houses up, meeting code and standard, we still have a lot that don't, but we don't need to add to that. We did learn that lesson two months ago, we should have.
So if I'm hearing that as consensus to write, draft the ordinance to that detail, I will do that. Certainly can leave it open-ended and fill in the blank if there's interest and more time to consider that.
I'm giving a head nut.
So just to be clear though, I do want to make sure we're clear. It's 30 days after after November 19th, and that's voluntary compliance, mandatory April 1st.
Correct.
Yeah.
That works for me.
It works for me. I mean, what I like to be, you know, the 29th of December, 19th of December, yeah, I would. But I don't think it's going to make a real big difference in our inventory one way or the other. So.
And during that time, we can do a good public relations outreach, encourage people to start now versus wait till the last minute, so.
And to just double check, this doesn't have to go through planning commission?
Correct. So it's a process. Adopting changes to the municipal code is just a public hearing before City Council, so not, different from development code amendments which do run through planning commission. So just want to note that our other responsibility is to notify the state upon adoption and identify and specify where in the community the building code would be applicable to. And as has been the direction of City Council is, would apply to the entirety of the city limits. And that is a fluid barrier, meaning that when properties are annexed into the city limits, then those properties would then be subject to these R 327. I do also want to note, based on the notification topic, we have reached out to Central Oregon Builders Association as well as did a targeted mailing or email list to all contractors and applicants for building permits within the city limits in the last, was it the last year, three?
One or two years.
One or two years. It was a mailing list of about 80 individuals. So working to get that word out and welcome participation now and through the public hearing process. And again, we're all preparing for the public hearing on November 19th. And yeah, with that, just want to thank Krista's expertise and coordination partnership on this project and ultimately a responsibility of Deschutes County Building Division to implement these standards. So it was critical to have a good working relationship and their buy-in on the project. And Krista's been our conduit to State Building Code Division on any inquiries on process or questions. So it's a value partnership.
Yes, thank you very much, Krista.
You're welcome.
Having, it's exciting to know that the county is also considering this as well because as we all know, you're only as safe as your neighbor and have a lot of neighbors right across that boundary, you know, county property. So it's a team effort. Yeah, and considering it's on the heels of the flat fire, I think this is really good timing to get this in place.
I appreciate you applying it holistically across the city versus picking certain areas and leaving others out. I think that's a great solution.
Yeah, thank you. All right, is that it? Great. All right, wow. Well, thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, let's move on to other business. So want to take a lead on that and.
Yeah, so Mayor, Council, we could do staff updates and council updates now for the next half hour, however long it takes.
20 minutes.
Take a little break before the council meeting.
Sure.
It's okay. Staff is also prepared for staff updates. We could do that. Good job, Joe. Couple of quick things for me.
Writing is as we speak.
You have a joint meeting with the County Board of Commissioners next You have a joint meeting with the County Board of Commissioners next week. It's on a Thursday. It's November uh thirteenth at six P M in this room. We have a, a few topics.
I canceled it. No.
The next week, uh, Tuesday is Veterans Day. A reminder about that. So city offices will be closed in recognition of Veterans Day on Tuesday. Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll be thrown off a little bit because it's on a Thursday evening with that joint meeting. Um, I wanted to thank staff and Deschutes County Sheriff's Office for uh their participation in the trunk or treat, which I think broke records uh this year. Um, so uh, thanks, thanks to staff and, and others for, for such a great event, um, put on there by our Recreation District. Uh, we've closed recycling center survey. Um, I think we had about four hundred and thirty responses. Um, probably majority of those in city. Um, there was definitely folks from outside city limits that responded, but uh some good data there. So uh, we closed out yesterday afternoon, compiled the results, get those shared to council and come back uh to continue our conversation about the future of the recycling center. We had a wildfire mitigation group meeting uh yesterday, uh, this, yesterday morning in this room. Couple of things that's going on, the nat- uh, natural hazard mitigation plan update uh is underway. And then that CWPP Community Wildfire Protection Plan is also being worked on. There was a meeting a few weeks ago here in uh City Hall. Doing that update for the Sisters area. And speaking of fire, Flat Fire Recovery Forum, the C four C event uh is this weekend. Sunday, um, four P M, I believe is start time at the elementary school, uh, the new elementary school. And then uh, I think everybody but Council McDougal has now done a tour of downtown with her fire uh district officials, the chief and the fire marshal. Great walks, uh, eye-opening, uh, to see what they see and look at the fire dangers in downtown. Next steps is we'll be, you know, compiling, you know, those notes and, and what we observed. Um, and talk about what, you know, maybe we need to take a step forward and doing more of an inventory of where those uh risks are, public and private, right? What's the low hanging fruit versus the bigger efforts to, to do further resiliency work in our downtown.
I'm gonna go, so I, Mike was looking at me funny like.
Well, we do things in pairs and you're the, you're a lot.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Try not to pick a rainy or snowy day. Um, okay, who's ready over there at the staff table? Uh, Carrie? And if you want to grab a mic, we can just, yeah.
Um, just a couple more dates and things to put on your calendars. We have our signage open house on Wednesday, November twelfth. It's a busy week next week from four to six thirty P M. Uh, Wednesday, the twelfth, from four to six thirty P M, the signage master plan.
That's here.
That's here in this building. Um, we have another conversation with council that, um, Council Pellerin and Council President McDougal will do. At the Children's Museum on Saturday, November fifteenth from eleven to one, so thank you for doing that. And then to save the date, um, we're gonna, we're working towards a board appreciation event on Tuesday, December second, probably at five P M. But if you can save that evening open, that would be great.
Board appreciation.
Board appreciation, so, so all of our owners, thank you event, our board and commissions, a thank you event. So we're working on that.
I missed it last year.
It's fun.
Yeah.
I'm in Hawaii, sorry.
Darn it. It won't be as fun without you.
I'll get your candy for it.
We'll have my ties.
Uh, December second, I'll send you out a reminder for that as well, for all of those, I will. Um, attended both the uh, according to Houseless Response Office and the Regional Houseless Council meeting. But I will let uh Councilor McDougal kind of go into conversations about those, a lot of conversation about funding for the most part. And therefore, lack of funding that maybe doesn't exist right now and how people are going to spread the, those dollars around, so. Um, very good conversation. We had um Representative Broadman and uh Senator Breeze Iverson there.
Vice versa.
Iverson Breeze.
Senator.
Senator Broadman, representative, yes, um, there, which was actually a great conversation, talking about how people from different um perspectives. Had come together to work together, so that was, that was a good meeting. And then um, we had an Explore Sisters meeting as well, uh, was, they're just moving along and um, working on doing some great things. They're putting together a holiday, um, and they call it the wrong thing. But never before have anybody put together a list of all the holiday events happening in Sisters. And we have a lot. They have from pre-Thanksgiving all the way through New Year's. They have something happening at least every weekend, if not, so they're going to put that out. They're working on some um branding of that, some light advertising of that, so that's one of those things that we haven't had and, and they're working towards doing that. And they'll also be approving their budget for next year in the, the next meeting. They've been looking at that from the last couple of meetings, so doing some good work there. And then you all receive the action plans and the updated FAQ from the conversation about houselessness that is on our website right now. And would hope to bring back some conversation about that with council and a workshop, um, to kind of circle back on all of that in January. Um, and February as workshop space allows. That's my guy.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you.
That was passed. That was.
Yes. You can do it there.
Okay, it's right after.
That's getting warmed up.
Just throwing my comments together here, so uh, don't need to give you an update on the U G B, because we'll give you one later. Uh, so uh, we are working on getting together our next Parks Board meeting uh next week. It's a, it's a little later than it usually is. It's usually on the fifth, but because of this meeting tonight, it got knocked to the, to next week. Um, we're going to plan to give them an update on the status of the Northwest Park Master Plan. Um, I think the consultant's ready to share some revised uh plans uh at this point with the Parks Board. Then it'll go to the council on the nineteenth. Uh, we'll give you an update on all the uh public comment that's taken place uh so far. Since you, since you last uh saw it, we had that public forum that was well-attended and got lots of good feedback, so we'll, we'll uh update the Parks Board on that. And then uh, we'll also uh, uh, give them an update on the uh proposed uh different layouts. Uh, I say we, talking Public Works in Jackson, uh mostly, will have been working on some uh layouts for the dog park. At the uh Sisters Gateway Park, AKA the East Portal. And so we'll get the feedback uh from them on which one they like the best uh on that. And then they'll also have an opportunity while they're here to go and hopefully hit the open house for the signage master plan while they're here, get their comments on that. Uh, we're still kind of, we're kind of winding down the process with our short-term rental license, operating license renewal uh period this year. If you recall, um, it's been a, a little bit more uh involved this year with compliance with the, the criteria. The, the renewal criteria, which is a little bit of a new thing for uh short-term rental uh license holders. So we're giving everyone uh some extra grace this year to comply, because it isn't, even though they've been on the books, it's, it's a, it's more of a. Uh, you know, a uh, a different compliance uh requirements this year than in the past. Uh, but out of that process, uh, we've had about sixteen of our permit holders uh relinquish their, their, their permits, which was, is interesting. Uh, we're down to about eleven that uh are still kind of in the incomplete phase, eighty-eight that are complete, so. Let's uh give uh.
You might as well chime in on that.
You most certainly may.
Yeah, um, one of the, one of the compliance items that's new from previously, it wasn't really enforced before is. Is uh insurance and insurance is already hard to get. And then getting over covered on your house or a short-term rental um is even harder. So it's one of the items that's really difficult and I know from experience. Thank you.
Good feedback.
Uh, just, I think I've noted this in the past, we applied for a couple of grants through the state for some, some uh. Uh, they're called housing planning assistant grants and uh we are going to do one to do a, a code audit. Hire a consultant to do a code audit to see uh where our code is out of compliance with uh state law. Uh, that, you know, uh, laws are considered continually being passed, uh, and that requires uh codes to be updated. And it's, it's a, it's a bit of a burden on small towns uh that don't have people dedicated to this. Um, so uh, but it's probably time to go take a look at it and making sure, also at the same time, kind of taking a look at where our code might have barriers to, to housing. Uh, production that we want to consider. Um, so uh, that, that will be an interesting process. Uh, we're also got a grant to do some, hire some engineering help for some initial infrastructure planning for uh future U G B areas. Um, anticipation of area planning, um, so that'll, that'll be a big help. Uh, continuing to uh, uh, work with our new associate planner, Sarah Vow, uh, with training. Uh, she's, she's a quick learner. I don't think it's going to uh take too long to get her up to speed. And uh, she's already doing great things for us, so it's, it's a big help for, for all of us in C D D. Who've been operating down a planner for the last five months, so.
Awesome.
No excuses now. So uh, there's other things going on, but I can, I guess I could just see if you have any questions on anything. Okay, good.
Can you explain the meaning of it?
Get a beer later.
Noting the code?
It's just on the code.
Yeah.
Jackson sporting the newest city of Sisters swag.
It's that time of year.
Yeah. Tell us.
Uh, good evening. Um, so a couple of updates. West Side Pump Station, uh, this morning about four A M, we uh tied in the new force main to our existing force main. Uh, everything went smoothly. We had staff on site. Uh, pump trucks ready to go. Fortunately, didn't have to use it. Um, so that went very, very well. We're all happy about that one. Um, and paving was completed on Tuesday. So we're going to be looking at uh doing some final touch-ups on that. We got a street sweeper through North Pine Street, uh, clean that up a little bit. So nearing the end of the force main alignment work. Uh, we will be taking the Camp Polk Multi-Use Path Design and the City Hall Landscaping Concepts. Uh, to the Public Works Advisory Board uh this month. Normally, the second Tuesday of the month, we have rescheduled that for the third, November eighteenth. The C E C power outage, uh, scheduled power outage, uh, we were over-prepared and underwhelmed. I know a lot of folks probably woke up to their uh stove and microwave with the time off, but um, things went really well for that one. Tuesday morning, we lit our burn pile for the year. Uh, we got our permit from the Oregon Department of Forestry. Wind conditions were favorable and the rainy weather this week, we felt comfortable with lighting that. So if you saw plume smoke that morning, that was, that was us.
I thought the sewer job was on fire.
And also got an email uh from the ODOT Automatic Email Service. Uh, McKenzie Pass, the gate closest to Sisters will close uh Thursday, November sixth. According to that email, they have moved the gate one mile closer to town, uh, supposedly for easier turnarounds for folks. Um, I have yet to see that myself. Uh, those are the updates that I have.
So they haven't closed the gate yet. Tomorrow, tomorrow, whether it's been showing on trip check for about a week and a half is being closed.
No, but the, the top.
Oh, up at the top.
Yeah, you can still go to the top, but yeah, no, I'm closing it for good.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to provide the comment if I could. Um, uh, you and Paul should get a lot of credit. Um, that was a lot of work on Pine and Jefferson and it went really well. And as far as I've heard, the city has gotten very little um negative feedback, if any at all. And so good job getting that together. That was a big, big expensive project and it's pretty much done, right? That part of it, that little section of it.
Uh, getting pipe in the ground, yes.
Yeah, so good job.
Yeah, they were working out there this morning when I headed to the airport in Redmond at five thirty, so yeah, they just loved it working away on that corner.
I'll let them all know.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I guess to tack on to the C E C, you can keep going, the power outage, you know, Jordan looked into that, but part of the town was getting power bumps. Um, a lot, you get, yeah, I was getting them. Um, and so, yeah, you look, you talked to C E C and it was kind of a. A faulty breaker.
Yeah, at the red, at the substation.
Yeah.
So hopefully they've narrowed it down to what the, the problem was and.
Yeah, my battery backup's kicking, kicking about a dozen times since.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was related.
You could call them power bombs.
Bumps.
Bumps.
Okay.
And one brownout.
I was just, I was just trying to get the terminology, but that wasn't one I knew, or you, I didn't know what you're talking about.
It would just shut off and come right back on again, but it, I could.
About four nights ago.
About two nights ago?
Yep.
Okay.
Nine before last, yep, about nine o'clock.
Okay, is it really where you lived, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think uh, there's a kind of a south-north divide in their, their system and so I think there's more people on the south side. And, because I don't think you, it was, you weren't experiencing in this building.
No, but Public Works was. It's off for about five minutes.
Yeah, interesting, okay.
I get, I get a report from my battery backup system.
Oh, look at.
Which.
Yes, go.
All right, yeah, finance time. I just have a couple. Yeah, hello, just have a couple of things here. Uh, so I think as I mentioned before, we had a, a payroll audit. Um, for our workman's compensation uh program. That was a, I think the third audit in like nine years. Uh, this auditor was very particular, um, but was uh really informative as well. So uh, we just finished that exit interview today. Um, so all good things. Um, let's see. Uh, we also had our uh Schutz County Assessor Town Hall last night, so we had about three people here. Um, and I think they all kind of appreciated information and the knowledge, you know, that the tax system here, with especially with measure fifty. Is really confusing to a lot of people and so um, um, our assessor did a great job of explaining that, you know, Scott Langton, he's done that for years. Um, so the, the folks that had questions were, were really happy uh when they left. And I also tried to recruit, there were some kind of prospective board members there too, so maybe we'll get some uh more recruitment uh from that little pool there. Um, and then uh, speaking of property taxes, so as you know, those, those came out um, a couple of weeks ago now. Uh, a lot of people got their statements just last week and in terms of where we hit some of these marks with our budget. So if you remember, we budgeted in the, uh, for the city at least about six point five percent of it increased and assessed value. The actual came out to be about five point nine percent. Um, so even though we, we budgeted a little higher than actual. We kind of conservatively round that down. Um, so the, the financial difference won't be that much. Uh, the U R A was a little bit more in line with our um, six point five percent percentage. Uh, so we should see a pretty even um revenue uh from that. So uh, those are, that's always kind of a relief to see that, especially uh, you know, with where we budgeted. Um, and I kind of asked him about next year and he was a little bit mum on that. He said, well, let me know and, you know, give me another call in, in January. So they haven't really figured out the, you know, the new roles quite yet, obviously. Um, and so, yeah, other than that, kind of business as usual in finance. Unless you have any questions.
But down.
Campground is shut down. We do have, I think I mentioned this to you already, we both, we have two sets of campus already in place for next year, which has been great. Um, you know, in the years that we've been doing this, the earlier that we can recruit, the better off we are. We can vet them easier. Um, a lot of them are looking to, you know, find a place uh in the spring, especially if they're relocating anyway. Um, so we, we, before, we had a tendency to wait until, you know, January, February, but now if we can do it earlier, we can get. Um, just a lot better of a, of a, of a crew, so um, yeah, that's great to have those two in place, that they are going to be brand new. Um, but they do have a lot of experience, so.
And I would say regarding campground as a neighbor, I mean, I'm across the street, it was a non-available year. That's always a good thing.
Yeah, good. It's always good to hear. And we've got some really good campers and hosts.
Are we anticipating fee increases anytime soon for the campground?
Um, not.
Did one, right?
We, we just, a good question, yeah. We just did one and we did a five dollar increase across the board, so probably not for next year. Um, we are looking to do a few things. Um, we've kind of, we're evaluating some access, uh, wire, uh, internet access points. Uh, we just have got some kind of negative feedback about coverage issues kind of towards the outskirts of the campground. We did put one access point in last year, um, just kind of expand that coverage maybe a little bit. Um, just people use the internet a lot more uh than they used to for the campground. It's kind of a give and take, because you want them to just kind of be here and be in the moment, not be on the internet. But um, it is something that people use as a tool to, to navigate the city. So we're um, kind of looking at that with our I T contractor, um, and just some other minor things to.
Make a point one at my house that I.
Call it, yeah, right?
Sell them the passive, the rock, the wifi.
Sisters wifi, just the whole city.
There you go, yeah. All right, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That everybody?
Yep.
Okay, um, probably good time to just uh adjourn the workshop and then we will re-adjourn for the regular city council meeting at six thirty. Thank you.
Super.
It's called November eleventh, uh, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Regular meeting of the Sisters City Council. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God. In this world of liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Council President McDougal.
Here.
Councillor Pridon.
Yep.
Councillor Ross.
Present.
Councillor Pellerin.
Here.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think you know nays. Uh, visitor communication, so uh, we have, uh, our regular visitor communication time. We also have a resolution coming up this evening, um, that we have the choice of doing a, opening a public hearing. And I think, um, I think we all chatted about this a little bit, that we got a head nod.
Just for clarification, the resolution is for the U G B.
Yeah, U G B decision, yes. Um, so if, if we feel like we're going to, we still have to vote on that, um, to open up that public hearing, but if we feel like we want to do that, um, then I would like to have anybody with visitor communication that does not have to do with the U G B resolution, they can speak now. And if they have comments in regards to the U G B conversation resolution, then we can wait.
Speak during the public hearing.
Speak during that public hearing, yeah. So got a head nod there? Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. Just sorry, a little bit of nonsense we have to do up here to make sure we're keeping it legal. So, uh, visitor communication. And if there's anybody with topics that, um, aren't related to U G B.
Mark Dickens.
Uh, Mark Dickens, one thirty-three, East Black Crater, here in Sisters. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I wanted to come back and update, uh, the council and the mayor as to the issue that I've been speaking about here. I was out of the state for six months or so working. I met with, uh, your city manager yesterday, Jordan, and I gave him copies of all documents and asked him to please, um, pass them around to all council members and the mayor. Um, as you recall, um, I've been in this dispute with the county, uh, building department, specifically the building official. Um, I went through the next set of steps here as requested and that I agreed to with County Legal Department, Stephanie Marshall. And I have, um, in the correspondence that I gave your city manager, I have copies here that I hope you'll take the time to read. And you'll see where once again, the county entered into a written agreement that if I perform some final inspections on my property and submit all the documents, that they would upon inspection, close out the, uh, permit and code enforcement case. Um, and they've once again reneged on this. This is about the third or fourth time that this has happened. And this just brings me closer to filing a lawsuit against the city and the county. Um, so this is one part of what's happening on my property. I wrote a response to Stephanie Marshall, uh, that I would describe as a fairly scathing email, pointing out the fact that I've been in code compliance for years and that they are now reneging on this once again. And instead of her responding and defending the county's position, they responded with issuing me a trespass notice. Uh, attempting to silence me and prevent me from speaking or attending, uh, any meetings down there at the county. Um, I appealed this and pointed out that this is an infringement on my First Amendment rights. And the deputy director has now rescinded the majority of the trespass notice, but apparently is still banning me from the building. They don't want me speaking publicly. The Board of Commissioners has threatened me and, um, tried to intimidate me from going down there and speaking because I think they know they have a problem. They have what I would describe as a very rogue, unethical, corrupt, dishonest, and now vindictive building official. And, uh, the consequence of this, um, is that people will avoid working with that department. The residents of the city of Sisters will not work with the county. They will circumvent the building codes. They will go out and do all kinds of work illegally, which I've documented here in the city for years. So this is one of the consequences when you have an uncooperative, dishonest, unethical building official. They cause a lot of damage. They think they're doing good. So this really should be taken seriously by this board. You guys have a contract with them. I'm a resident of the city of Sisters. You're my elected officials. You have a responsibility for resolving this. I don't want to file litigation. It's going to be very embarrassing when everybody gets deposed and all this comes out publicly. Um, I have a journalist at the Bulletin who's monitoring this and he's ready to start writing about it. This is another part of the property, which I also provided this document. I would ask you and encourage you to please read this as well. This was the approval on my property in two thousand and eight. Uh, recently, your staff decided they want to reinterpret this and decide that my other house, my other residence on the property is not really a house. This clearly states that it is. And your city manager, I think, for whatever reason, perplexing to me, took it upon himself to try to reinterpret this along with staff. And his explanation makes utterly no sense whatsoever. You can't do an addition to a manufactured house. This was a separate standalone dwelling. So there's some serious issues here that I would again, um, plead to the city here to resolve, to look into it, to take some responsibility. Uh, don't aggregate your authority. Don't just, um, dump it on me, on the county, uh, because I have done everything. I have it in writing. I've performed everything that's been required. I have all the documentation to support it. I've given everything to your city manager. I hope he will copy it. If you have any questions, I'm always available to speak by phone or email or come in and talk or meet. But this needs to get resolved. This has been going on for nine years, nine years. The county has squandered, I would estimate, tens of thousands of dollars of county resources, uh, fighting me over this, which was nothing more than a hundred and fifty dollar permit, which could have been issued nine years ago, but they refused. They, they had the documentation to show definitively that I was in code compliance. And despite that, they initiated code enforcement proceedings against me, which the federal judge has already stripped away. Um, so this should be resolved. And I would just ask, uh, that you look into this and give it some attention. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mark.
If you're on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. There are none.
All right, thank you. All right, that ends visitor communication and we have no presentations this evening, so uh, we move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to pass that?
I move, uh, adoption of consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No nays, thank you. Um, I can, would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay.
Folks know.
All right, yeah, well, I will, uh, read just, uh, it's in the, uh, uh, it's in the packet, but I'll just tell you what was in that consent agenda was our minutes, um, from our last meeting. Amendment one to Northwest Housing Alternatives Affordable Housing Grant Agreement with the county amendment to ARPA grant for multi-family rental housing with the county. Excuse me, that was one with the county in that first one, um, some sort, a couple of, uh, surplus property items and approval proposal for heat pump replacements at city hall. Anyone who's been here to enough meetings knows sometimes it's a little hot or a little cold in here. We're gonna try to work on that. Yeah, all right. Now on to council business. Um, first up is item resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen U G B amendments and our community development director, Scott Woodford, will walk us through this process.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, welcome, city councillors. Uh, Scott Woodford, uh, Community Development Director for the City of Sisters. Uh, gonna make a short presentation tonight. Um, I also have with me as usual, uh, on the call or on Zoom, uh, is, uh, Matt Hasty and Andrew Parish from M I G, the consultants that have been with us, uh, every step of the way through this process and even prior to that. So they're here as a, as a resource, uh, for, for the council. Um, but, uh, I will lead you through a, uh, short presentation. We don't have a whole lot to present, uh, to, uh, tonight. Uh, let me share my screen here real quick. Uh, but wanted to kind of do a little refresher on where we are and kind of set the table for the discussion, uh, tonight.
And Scott, should we, um, do you want to do this first or should we, um, have our vote on if we open up the public hearing? First.
Uh, that to you, I, I think maybe after I make my presentation, but before you get to that point, uh, I think you could do it anytime.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we're doing this in the right order. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So as we always, uh, do with our presentations, we like to kind of give an update of where we are, uh, within the overall process. Uh, you can see all the areas that are shaded in gray are the, the steps that, uh, that we've already completed in this process, starting back in March of twenty twenty-four and, uh, we are at the preferred alternative stage of the, uh, discussion. Uh, once we decide or agree on a preferred alternative, uh, then, uh, we will go into the findings and the adoption stage. And that's the, that's the actual adoption of the U G B amendment. Uh, tonight is just a, uh, basically an adoption or recommendation of the map to include in that application for adoption. And then once, uh, we, uh, get it adopted, uh, then we'll move into, uh, other steps that we need to do to get, uh, properties ready to uh, annex in the, uh, in the near future, including area planning, which, uh, starts to give a little bit of more definition to these areas, uh, types of land uses where they might actually go within these maps. Uh, large, uh, larger, uh, utility connections, uh, how we're going to serve these areas and then, uh, 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 your kind of your framework for your access, uh, to these properties, uh, among other things. So as, as mentioned, this, uh, is resolution twenty twenty-five fourteen and what that resolution is asking is, uh, uh, as a resolution ordering the initiation of land use applications for a U G B amendment based upon the U G B map recommended by the U G B Steering Committee. Uh, this is a continuation of the discussion that we started, uh, on September twenty-fourth, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, when city council had a public hearing on this. Uh, the outcome of that, uh, uh, hearing was to, uh, continue the discussion, uh, and a- also, uh, schedule a workshop. Um, at the time during the meeting, I think council had some questions, uh, wanted more information from, from the staff. So including, uh, more detailed timelines for different types of, uh, decision-making points, uh, different scenarios that, uh, the council could potentially take and what the implications of of that would be on our process. Uh, they asked for more detailed information on McKenzie Meadows Village Properties in terms of the scoring, uh, that we, uh, undertook, um, uh, that we typically undertake, uh, for an analysis of properties. And then also some, uh, more information on development readiness, uh, of, uh, concept A A. At the time, uh, the public hearing was closed, uh, at the September twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, and for council deliberations, uh, uh, ultimately, uh, it was, it was continued, um, but they did keep the record, written record open at the time and you are considering potentially opening the, uh, oral testimony, uh, tonight as well. Just want to let uh, the, the community know if, uh, they submitted some, uh, letters to the council. Uh, council did receive those, staff received those. Uh, they were posted to the project website for the public to be able to access. And so thank you for, thank you for all the effort, uh, there to, uh, provide your, your thoughts and, uh, they were shared. Uh, so at this time, that would like to go over just basically what the, what we see as the council options are for tonight. Uh, you could either approve the resolution twenty twenty-five fourteen as presented, uh, with the U G B steering recommendation, uh, for map. You could approve resolution twenty twenty-five fourteen as amended with a different U G B amendment map proposal. Uh, or you could con- continue consideration of resolution twenty twelve, twenty twenty-five fourteen to a future meeting. Either to a near-term date, uh, for, for continued discussion or, uh, to a date that we're proposing, uh, in twenty twenty-six, April fifteenth of twenty twenty-six, which is, uh, the date that, uh, uh, is effectively the latest opportunity to determine if there's any resolution to the M N V appeal at that time, while keeping the final local adoption deadline date of January first, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, intact. That's the date that staff has determined that, uh, if we go past that date and wait any longer, uh, we would jeopardize that January twenty-first, uh, deadline. And again, that deadline is related to new state law that we would, uh, be required to comply with, uh, if we go past that, that, that date. Uh, since we're already in a U G B amendment process, they've agreed to sort of, uh, grandfather us under the old rules, but if we go past that January first uh, deadline, um, that could incur additional time and study and analysis and cost uh, to this process to, uh, redo, uh, some of our studies and, and that, that, uh, those impacts that could be created from that.
Scott, just to clarify on these date, the April fifteenth date, as I brought up in the, the work session, this April fifteenth date assumes that any decision other than concept A that where we change perhaps boundary lines or what have you does not go back to the steering committee and does not go back to the planning commission, but does include some public input opportunities.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to, right? We kind of talked about that. If we wanted to go back to the steering committee again, go through the, uh, uh, an analysis, just like they did before, um, with this new concept area, then, uh, we're talking more like January.
Yeah, correct. You'd have to build in some additional time if you wanted to, to route it back through the steering committee for their analysis. So this April fifteenth deadline does allow some opportunity for some public outreach on an alternative concept, but, uh, that, that would be basically it. So I'll just leave you with the, uh, uh, this slide. This is the recommended concept. Uh, if you, if you have any questions or, uh, any, uh, um, you know, related to timelines or scoring of properties, uh, we have slides in reserve that we could pull up, uh, for you. But uh, at this point, we're just gonna leave it at that and see what questions you might have, uh, for us.
Okay.
And just, I guess, just before, before we do that, just leave the, offer up the opportunity for, uh, Matt Hasty or Andrew Parish to add anything, uh, to my comments before we go to questions.
I, I don't have anything to add. Thanks for, for checking. I thought, yeah, the response regarding, um, additional time needed for the steering committee or planning commission, if you wanted to go back through that was spot on. You would need, I think, probably at least a couple of months to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, all right, I think we need to open up the public hearing then, if that's something that we want to do. So.
So, um, I'll move to reopen oral testimony.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so I will open up the public hearing. Did our staff report? And so we can move on to the public comments. And how many did we have? Six. Okay, all right. And when, when your name is called, please, um, come up to microphone and state your name and address and you have about three minutes.
Cole Gonzalez.
Hi, Sprey Sisters Oregon. Uh, hello, my name is Cole Gonzalez. I am a member of the Board of a Nonprofit Sisters, uh, Opportunities for Unified Living or Soul. Our mission is to create affordable, long-term homes for adults with intellectual and developmental. Uh, we want to build with sisters so our people, many of whom grew up here, can stay here where, uh, they've developed a community. Our first biggest hurdle is land. Uh, my, uh, Tina, or my colleague Tina Menzing, uh, spoke at a U G B meeting here and she told you we have an agreement with M N V and suggested we'd be happy to build with an option A if someone would sell us a a half an acre for a dollar. Shockingly, no one came forward. Uh, we chatted with a few landowners, uh, within option A, uh, people we know. Uh, they've told us either they have no interest in selling at this time or that they just want a developer to buy the property. They don't want to be involved in the building process. I get it. I didn't want to, uh, build housing either. I lived, I've lived in Sisters for thirteen years and in that time, we've seen multiple developers promise affordable housing only to have it evaporate in the end. M N V is different. Their first development, uh, committed to a ten percent affordable and they actually delivered. I trust them to follow through on their commitment to thirty percent. But it's more than that. My calculations, affordable means a home could cost as much as two thousand eight hundred per month. Uh, two full-time minimum wage employees shouldn't pay more than, uh, sixteen hundred a month uh, per month. Because of their disabilities, uh, future residents of Seoul generally work less than full-time, so their rent needs to be much lower. In, uh, by partnering with Seoul and Habitat for Humanity, M N V is ensuring that affordable housing is. By partnering with Soul and Habitat for Humanity, MMV is ensuring that affordable housing is truly not just legally affordable. They have provided a blueprint for a development that makes the owners money, but also provides the city of Sisters with what we so desperately need, housing for people to work here. MMV has a workable plan, one that we hope other landowners will seriously consider emulating. But until they do, the responsible decision is to include this property in the UGB and not leave housing for our people up to the goodwill of the of the as-yet-unknown developers who will someday purchase property in Option A.
Thank you, Cole. All right.
Kurt Kalberg.
How you doing? Sure, you're getting tired of this too, but my name is Kurt Kalberg. I came here about forty years ago, longer than any I'm sure. One of the reasons I came here was one of my best friends, John T. Hand. We used to hang out in a bar that his dad owned, and it was one of the reasons I came here with John T. Hand. Some of the comments that committee has run up is that we don't think that the T. Hand, the Lighthouse, or the Tassello property, the Robinson Owens property should come in. It all should come in. That's outstanding property. We've never said it's like some people of your committee have said, it's either or. It's never been either or. It's always been, we need both. And I got a little paper, and I I don't know if you're supposed to hand them out. Can you hand out? Mayor?
Give it to me.
Okay. I just, I made a copy here, and on the top of it, it says "A gift for Sisters community from Mackenzie Meadow." It's not about the money. And you, you know, I I think they just think we're greedy developers. But I made a list. Soul, the young man that was just up here, we'll sell him a couple lots for a buck. No other developer is going to do that. We will. Twelve young adults that have some problems need to have a house, and we're willing to help them out. You know, we also just signed a a deal with a product called Bridge Meadows. Bridge Meadows, thirty-six seniors. We're going to give, not even charge them a dollar. We're going to give them two acres of Mackenzie Meadow. And they not only take care of seniors, but they do foster homes for young people, and they mentor them. No other developers doing that. We will. You got my word on it. You know, we also wanted to help our friend Peter Hoover. Thirty-eight lots. You show me another developer that's willing to help Peter Hoover with thirty-eight lots. That will last them five to six years. We're willing to do it. No other developers doing that. It works to have both Mackenzie Meadow and the AA, or whatever you guys want to call it, the T. Hand, the Tassello property. It needs to work with both. We also met with the Forest Service. One of the comments was, you don't have any access in the Forest Service. Ian Reed, your head ranger, says, don't let that committee talk for the Forest Service. You'll have access. You can have the old wagon road to come out. You guys have gotten some good information and some bad information. You need to make sure you make your judgment on complete information. So in closing, you know, we want to do a program with the teachers, give some teachers some good affordable housing. We can't get teachers in this town. There's no affordable housing for teachers. We want to help them out. We also want to put a program for seniors in our high school that they can, I went through this program over in the valley, where you come work on a construction site, and you learn a trade, and you see if you might want to do this. Hayden is willing to do this. They're not going to, you know, these developers are not going to do it, you know? You were sold a blank piece of paper. That's what you think this is. Only a portion of this AA can work. Huge pieces have multimillion-dollar houses. These people are not going to be tearing these houses out to put in eight to ten houses per acre. You know, you got sold a bill of goods, and just just be very careful. Make the right decision for the community. Because Mackenzie Meadow, we want to do something about it. We want to give back. You know, I'm about done. I'm seventy-some years old. I built a probably a big portion, more than probably anybody else in this town. And it's time that I want to give back. My family wants to give back. The Willetts family and the Reed family want to give back to this community. Let us do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Jen Kovitz.
Good evening, Jen Kovitz. I do community engagement and government affairs for Hayden Homes. Whatever I was planning on saying, I threw it out the window an hour ago. So I've been thinking a lot about how land use in Oregon is an imperfect process, just like so many other processes in our democracy. And it's imperfect because it was created by humans, and we are also imperfect. And yet, I am so grateful that all of us get to participate in this imperfect process, that this city has done an exceptional job of holding space for this, and that everyone in this room, regardless of your perspective, has the right and the ability to participate in this process. It's not always easy, but I'm grateful for that imperfect process. Maybe, counsel, you like me, have had some moments where this process has made you feel fatigued or defeated. And I certainly have. And when I think about the reasons why I felt that way, it's always been at moments when it's felt divisive, us versus them, right versus wrong, one side or the other. And then there's been all the times when I have felt buoyed by this experience, again, this imperfect process. And it has been those moments when I have been able to have complex, robust discussions with humans that I respect about issues that we all care about, housing affordability, PEX, Pensiman, wildfire. These are all things that everyone in this room cares about. And when we work together on collaborative compromise, that's that's when we get to move forward, and that's what we're all here trying to do. I really believe that. And so what I'm asking this council to consider is a perspective from collaborative compromise. A dot A has plenty of merit that the Steering Committee worked their butts off to get to. But it's an imperfect, non-binding recommendation because it was created by humans. And so what would it look like for this council to look at the areas of A dot A that have the most merit? Brooks Resources has made an exceptional proposal for some of those low-barrier parcels that will produce housing quickly. What would it look like for this council to take the highest barriers of development areas? We're talking sixty acres, and and rethink what that that yellow portion looks like so that you could honor the work of the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission, while also recognizing that there is acreage that could produce what you need more quickly, and that's fifty-eight acres at Mackenzie Meadows. Again, I I do not envy this extremely important decision you have before you, and I do not envy how much divisiveness you have had to face through it, but I ask you to consider your next decision from a place of collaborative compromise. And again, thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process.
Thank you, Jen.
Bill Willetts.
Bill Willetts, six eight, six two one, East Highway twenty, Sisters, Oregon. A a couple of minor corrections. Wagon Wheel Road is an open road. We still have to apply for a permit, and it's going to take time, but we will get that permit. And in terms of the apprenticeship program that we're working on with Curtis Scholz, there is a little bit of a hiccup there unions, and we're hoping that we can work through that if the opportunity presents itself, but it isn't a certainty. I think you know my prejudice, and that is I believe that AA has no opportunity to deliver the land we need over the next twenty years. Clearly, concisely, I provided a lot of drawings today and a lot of information. And I don't I don't think there's an argument between the Highway one twenty-six segment and the Mackenzie Meadow Village segment. And if there is, then legal counsel will communicate that to you, and then you should defend the one twenty-six. But I'm here to talk about, it's it's kind of, we're getting close to Christmas. It's a wonderful life. And and that is, what will the city of Sisters not have if it somehow thinks one twenty-six is a better option than MMV? It's not going to have housing for thirty-six seniors. And this fell into our lap about a week ago, and it is an incredible opportunity for this community. They have two other sites they're building on. They won't be able to get to Sisters for three or four years. The timing will be perfect, and we're going to have thirty-six housing units for seniors and and kids, and that coordinated effort, and I tried to deliver that to you in five succinct pages. We we won't have Cole living in a place because he won't have a roof. And and that's another challenge because they have land. We've worked with them to develop building plans. They're still going to have to raise a couple of million dollars to build it. But I think we can. I think this community can. So that would put a roof over Cole. Thirdly, our good friend Peter Hoover, that number is thirty-six, and that is, we're committed to Peter delivering ham lots, and it should keep him busy for five to six years, you know, just based on housing inventory. And then finally, our working relationship with Curtis Scholz. He and I have been very close for about eight years, worked together on many different things, and we will deliver some housing for teachers, an opportunity to own a home, but also apartments, because Curtis' biggest challenge is he he has a teacher hired, they look at rents here, and sometimes they reject it, or they move to a different market because rents are lower. And we still have a marvelous school district. Curtis does a great job, but we're we're being affected. We're being pecked at a little bit. So I think I think that's it. That's my wonderful life. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Abhi Choudhury.
Good evening, council members. My name is Abhi Choudhury. I live at six nine zero three three Barclay Court, Sisters. I'm here to support the proposed AA map from the UGB Steering Committee. I was the vice chair of the Steering Committee, and in our year-long project, we considered a lot of land around Sisters. There's a pretty big space. And I think a lot of the discussion we've had around the UGB and what the Steering Committee considered has kind of had this implication that the Steering Committee did not consider the Mackenzie Meadows land. And I want to state that is not true. We did consider all of the eligible land, and especially towards the end of the Steering Committee. Once the MMV ownership group had submitted submitted the rezoning proposal, we engaged with that space as a potential space as well. And the committee, including in its last meeting, decided that AA was the better option. We had a whole bunch of reasons. I I won't go into the whole report, obviously, like the the report exists. But I think the most important thing is, like, what is the right thing for Sisters? There's two aspects of this. One is, what is the right thing for Sisters in terms of housing? And the roadmap, and the this is why the UGB Steering Committee was formed, to make sure that we're making informed decisions, where that there is how housing affordability in Sisters. We all acknowledge that there's a problem of housing affordability in Sisters. We've, we were all impacted by it. The second aspect of it is the functioning of Sisters as a democratic town, as a democratic city, and having processes and having committees and having open hearings, and there have been quite a few on on the UGB specifically. And I want to highlight that a big part of that was the City Council deciding that there would going to be a citizen-represented Steering Committee to make a proposal to study all those alternatives, working with the city staff, working with our outside consultants from MIG or MIG, and that Steering Committee came up with propose with with a proposal, a very specific proposal, and that proposal passed twelve to one. So there's only one person that voted against the proposed map. So there it wasn't like it was like a divided committee that there was a lot of disagreement within the committee, even with the pending rezoning, even with discussion of appeal or not appeal, but it's not really about the appeal. It's about like, what is the process? What is, how do we remain consistent and transparent in how we make decisions? And from my perspective, the Steering Committee put in a year of effort, had a lot of discussions, was well-informed by consultants from city staff, and continue to engage, still continues to engage on this topic. We believe that Concept AA is the right proposal for Sisters. We believe that it has the ability to offer affordable housing solutions. We do not think that, I I think, I now I don't want to speak for the committee where like the committee hasn't hasn't voted on on something, but I think there's this really important question of how much land can the UGB proposal have? And we cannot just add sixty-four acres without taking away sixty-four acres. There there's rules around how much land actually can be pressed in for the county and the state to approve. And so we did the math. We ran through, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, like eight or twelve different setups, and pretty much there was only one variation that considered MMV. So in our eight to twelve variations, we still thought there were lots of available space in Sisters that met all the requirements for the UGB growth. Yeah, so I I just to reiterate, I'm here to support the UGB Steering Committee's proposal and the map and for us, like as as a city, to get behind the process that we have agreed to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abhi.
Monica Tomasi.
Hi, Monica Thomasy, five two seven South Fair Street in Sisters. I wasn't going to speak, but I just decided to to emphasize one point. And this is, first of all, I recommend you just select AA without the Mackenzie Meadows property. I I do have decades of experience in forest ecology and management at the watershed and landscape scale. I also have people with disabilities in my family, and also people not able to afford to buy a home, so I I'm very empathetic to that issue. If you read my comments, which I've sent in several over the last few months, you know you know what I've been saying about the risk of wildfire to properties and lives. And so I won't reiterate that. I just want to emphasize that not only would I not put housing, affordable or not, in that property in at that site, I definitely wouldn't put housing in for people with physical or mental disabilities or special needs. Think about the reaction time that people have to have to escape. You you may have three minutes, you may have twenty. And when I when I hear the arguments for housing for the site for people with special needs, I think, what are you thinking? I I I would never support a family member with special needs living there, but just because of the the risk. And I do I do think that the council has a responsibility to safety. And I I do think it would be barely irresponsible to be blinded by the shiny object dangling. And I, I do think it would be barely irresponsible to be blinded by the shiny object dangling in front of you right now. When in the long term, in the bigger picture, there are other places that are safer for people with disabilities of any kind to escape in a timely manner. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when a fire will go through that area. And I just ask you to think about that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Kristin Riedelberger.
Hello, Mayor and city councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment. My name is Kristin Riedelberger and I'm the Cities and Towns Associate Program Manager at Central Oregon Land Watch. And I served as an ex officia member on the UGB Steering Committee. Central Oregon Land Watch supports the UGB Steering Committee and Planning Commission's recommendation to expand Sisters into AA. AA has sufficient lands to meet Sisters' 20-year land need for future employment, housing, parks and schools. It shares much of the city's current boundary and will seamlessly blend into the existing city with walkable access to jobs, services, parks, events and other needs and amenities. AA will also provide a key opportunity to connect Barclay to Highway 126, providing congestion relief for Highway 20. AA includes both highly developable sites that can meet affordable housing needs now and other parcels that will develop more gradually over the next 20 years. By choosing to further urbanize lands that are already impacted by rural development, AA reduces the pressure to develop Sisters area farms, forests and wildlife habitat. Sisters needs affordable workforce, senior and supportive housing. Central Oregon's need, Central Oregon's for-profit and nonprofit developers understand this need and are rising to meet this need. Mackenzie Meadows' proposal for 30% affordable housing has set the bar for other developers that will take Park in Sisters as future growth. Brooks Resources has also proposed 31% affordable workforce housing in AA to help meet this demand. We also urge the city to utilize a variety of tools and strategies to support the development of these housing needs within the existing city and within AA lands. Lastly, Land Watch does not support including the Mackenzie Meadows property in this UGB expansion. And we are appealing the county's rezon decision to Zuba. Thank you for your service and consideration.
Thank you, Kristin.
Grayden Manning.
Members of council, Grayden Manning, 1506 Northeast First Street in Bend. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Don't envy your positions tonight. We are here with CS Construction and Brooks Resources, representing approximately 75 acres in the northeast portion. Proposed UGB amendment is demonstrated in the concept plan that you received a couple of weeks ago with narrative. We feel confident in our ability to achieve many of the goals that you have within the UGB process. We're here tonight to encourage you to find a solution that avoids a significant delay in this process. That likely comes from compromise from key stakeholders involved in this process. And we're prepared to work together with you, with the stakeholders and with landowners to an outcome that avoids the stalemate, which ultimately would be a lose-lose for everyone involved in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grayden.
That is all the in-person. Okay, communications and online. For those joining by Zoom, if you'd like to make public comment on this item, please raise your hand. There are none.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then we can move on to council discussion. First of all, maybe, does anyone have any, you know, questions for Scott or staff or?
I actually do. There's been a lot of talk about considering MMV and whether it's priority one or forest two or whatever. Is it true or not that currently, even with a possible consideration of intent to appeal? Is or is not MMV a priority one land at this? So it's a hard question. I know it's legally detailed, but I think it's important.
Yeah, it's a key question. That's something that we've considered throughout this process because it's been a topic of discussion for a while now. And it's something that we've sought direction from, from DLCD on, because we know that it would come to this, or come to a potential question. The direction that we got was that you, if we were to bring forth a UGB amendment proposal that included lands that were not on appeal, on appealed decisions for priority one lands, it would get remanded back to us. So while they do have approval, they don't have an unappealed, unappealed decision yet because it's under appeal. Garrett, if you want to add anything more to this, to that statement.
Or intent to appeal. Is that the same thing legally?
More or less. The, the filing of the notice of intent appeals, the first step in the Luba appeals process. And it follows with the county submitting the record and then eventually the parties submit their briefs and, and that whole process is about 90-ish days, although there's plenty of ways it can go shorter or longer. So anybody's best guess there. To, to your question, hey, you know, frankly, I think the courts are going to have to answer that question. Because from what I've seen from some of the interested parties, some of what I've seen from DLCD, at least I'm not convinced that anything squarely addresses the issue. So for better or worse, it's part of the imperfect system that someone referenced before that unfortunately will, will probably going to have to get resolved through the court system.
Matt Hasty does have his hand up.
Yeah, I would just briefly add to that and say that what we heard from DLCD is that they would remand a, a local decision if all of the appeals had not been resolved. So that means Luba appeal and any subsequent appeals of the Luba decision. So we really, it, it makes it very hard to answer that question because those processes have not moved forward, but that is what they've said, you know, and, and that's as much, that's what we can go on is kind of what action they, they have said as a state agency they would take. And it's consistent with their, their rules and their guidelines. So, you know, technically, right now, MMV, you know, based on the county's decision, could be considered priority one lands. But as Scott said, and what DLCD said was, if, if the city and county were to move forward and adopt that, it would then go to DLCD and they would remand it back until all the appeals were resolved. So that's as much as we know. But I mean, you know, your attorney's right. I mean, it, we won't know until the court system ultimately makes decisions about this.
And that would also be the case if the AA decision were to be appealed?
Well, that's a, no, I don't think that's quite the same situation. If the AA, the AA decision wouldn't be appealed until the city and county made a decision. So it's kind of a different, it's a different situation. But yes, if, so it's not really the same, but yeah, if, if the city and the county move forward with A.A., approve that through a local process or something like it, and then that was appealed, then yes, that would then hold up the ability to move forward with annexation, et cetera. So.
Really did what I meant when I said that. So thank you.
Yeah, to be, to be clear, the MMV rezon is in the Luba sphere. You guys are going to be in the UGB amendment sphere, going to DLCD. So the, the point that Matt is underscoring is the people that are literally going to review whatever you submit are telling you one thing. There you go.
And else have any other questions for staff or consultants or? Anybody like to start to discuss or state anything? Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. So it's a big night. And I do have some prepared comments because I can't remember everything when I'm sitting up here in, under a little bit of stress. But I don't want that to appear that I wasn't listening tonight. And I have done all the reading today. A lot came in. And I, and I appreciate that. I, I actually, it makes me very happy that people are involved and, and interested in what we're doing here. But I will read this just so that I make sure all of my thoughts aren't lost. So sometimes like tonight, I make notes ahead of council meetings because it can be hard to remember everything I wanted to say. I know I will still forget to address something important, so please know that it is not from disregard to a certain aspect of this decision, but because there have been so many moving parts and people involved in this project. I want to first thank our amazing community development team led by Scott Wordford and including our MIG team members. I can't imagine one more ounce of effort being put into community outreach than on this project. In my opinion, this project has been run with the utmost professionalism. Thank you. Thank you to our steering committee. I well know your all volunteers and put more hours into listening, studying, analyzing and a final recommendation than you originally expected. Our community is lucky to have you and I'm grateful you stepped up. Thank you to our planning commission. I know your work on this project and seconding of the steering committee's decision happens with much thought. To our county commissioners, thank you for hearing our call for assistance and being willing to help with speed and diligence. Thank you to our amazing extended community. I realize that some of the conversations have been difficult and perhaps confusing, especially in early days when looking at the original five concepts. I believe that taking care each step of the way caused important conversations, which hopefully ended up with more clarity all around. I appreciate every piece of communication you shared with our teams. A project of this magnitude needs to hear all voices that want to be heard and is never going to occur without some disagreement. I applaud your involvement and appreciate your civility and respect with which you shared your views. Tonight, I am voting to move ahead with concept AA. This co, this vote comes with much investment in the process. So the Mackenzie Meadows team, please know and hear that I appreciate your enthusiasm and commitment to continue doing positive things in our community. My vote to move AA forward is not a vote against MMV. Contrary to that, my hope is that there will be another path forward as legislative tools to assist cities like ours as small UGB amendments continue to evolve. To anyone with lingering questions, especially with affordable housing and other special projects to benefit the community, especially with these things on your mind, please remember that this is but one step of many that occurs in the long-term efforts to thoughtfully annex land into our city. Many steps have been completed, but there is much more analysis, discussion and input to come. Please stay engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sure. Like Sarah, I wrote a bunch of stuff down over the last several days because I have a horrible memory at my age. And it's interesting, some of the comments tonight that have come in kind of pick up on some of this. So I want to give you a context first, so you'll know where I'm at. First of all, I spent a good deal of time in many sleepless nights thinking about this UGB expansion and the opportunity it represents to the city to address issues related not only to our vulnerable forest residents but our long-term viability as a vital community. Strong communities have several common traits, stratified housing opportunities, a vibrant, diverse workforce, a strong school system, healthy retail employment opportunities and a population that resents all incomes and levels. I know that you folks all understand this. Unfortunately, I believe we are at risk of losing our long-term viability as our median age and income level and cost of housing creep up. We're becoming a community of that moment retirees as working families are increasingly priced out of the sisters housing market. With this loss of working families, we will begin to have difficulty staffing our businesses, problems attracting qualified professionals to work at our clinics and schools, and over time declining enrollment in our schools. As an educator, I have watched communities struggle to keep the heart of their town, the local schools. Viable and open when economic pressures, pressures cause a drop in school enrollment, and that will happen here if we do nothing. I personally experienced this as a teen when our local high school closed and we were bused 30 miles to a nearby school district. When, after I graduated college and went to work in Oregon, I returned to my community 20 years later. It was no longer the vibrant place of my youth. Families had moved to the town where their children went to high school. My town did have a newer but much smaller K-8 elementary school with five teachers to cover all the grades. As opposed to the school I went to in that town, which had 10 teachers discover grades one through eight. This didn't happen overnight, but it illustrates what, what occurs nationally as families with school-aged children either choose or forced to move from areas with strong employ, to areas with strong employment and family wage jobs, along with affordable housing. So in short, Sisters, to remain viable in the long term, will need workforce housing and broader housing opportunities and rentals. With that in mind, I went looking at the opportunities before us. And I read everything that came in my inbox, including the stuff that I got while hiking in Smith Canyon yesterday on my watch. My wife kept saying, why is your watch dinging? Lots of emails came in. So I'm going to speak to concept AA first. Pros. This excellent, the excellent conceptual plan provided by Brooks Resources, the CS Construction for the 75 acres that they have commitments for. That's a pro. It features an honest effort to get a good start on workforce housing and affordable housing development. And I appreciate the work that they put forward. And I'm aware that for many developers, this is not something you normally put in front of people when you really don't have everything nailed down. And it has a healthy mix of market rate housing as well, which is a good thing too. We still need to address the folks that will come here and, and retire or have a little bit higher income. Maybe the kids aren't in school anymore. Now it has some cons in my mind, and this is the educator in me. The distance from schools means that busing costs will increase significantly for the school district. And anytime you spend money on buses, you spend less money on children. Increased traffic at the West Roundabout as parents who do choose not to have their children on the bus drive to the school and high school students drive personal cars. And you see that, we saw that when the school was across the street and we see that at, at the elementary school now, parents who choose to do that. And I understand that. Now, on another side, my cons. There we go. I can't read. Not all of AA is free of CCRs and HOA constrains. Plus it contains a number of reluctant sellers. Construction of a new roundabout of Locust and Barclay would be time-consuming and disruptive, but will mean that, that the work and the housing in AA will be a little bit longer to come on board. Traffic on North Locust will increase significantly and may tax the capacity of Locust Cascade Roundabout. And the connection to 126 could prove problematic. The special interest groups may contest the bridging of Witches Creek and sellers may not want to provide the land necessary for the road. And ODA will have, may have objections to regarding the access to 126. You could make the same argument for MMV. Now MMV is property. Property has long been intended for development as educated by the street stubouts at the back of the property. Developers don't put asphalt down to look good. They put it down for a reason. It's there. Owners have committed along with Hayden House to buy deed restricted housing aimed at affordability and workforce needs. Proximity to the schools means reduced busing costs as older students can easily walk to the neighborhood school. It also means reduced trips on Barclay through the West Roundabout if everybody were coming from the AA properties. And it has that dedicated property for the IDD housing needs, which we heard about a little earlier. Now, there's been some discussions about the wildfire urban interface and pluses and minuses, but you heard tonight in the workshop, we're taking strong efforts to ensure that anything that gets built will have defensible space and will have building hardening standards. And I would argue that any fire coming from the east, such as the wildfire did, would have a hard time moving through any new development that meets these standards, whether it's at AA or whether it's MMV. To the risk of those folks in deforested areas outside the urban deforested areas outside the urban growth boundary, they're probably more at risk of a fire coming from the west than through any development on the property of MMV. Now, the cons, it's strong neighbor opposition. I know that. I've gotten the 50, 60, 70 emails. There's a Land Watch appeal currently in place. There's going to be a need for a third exit through Forest Service land by widening this development room. No guarantees on anything like there is anything else. And there'll be increased pressure on neighborhood streets from more residents living in that area. Now, both options have strengths and weaknesses, and in my opinion, both make it viable and difficult for a decision. I believe our best option is to redraw A.A. to eliminate the problematic lands that people do not wish to sell or that are unlikely to sell and expand our UGB both to the east and west of town. Knowing that we have a commitment of 75 acres in the AA development, quality land, buildable land, and a high-quality developer ready to move forward on that. And the 50-plus MMV acres gives us almost 130 acres of our identified land needs, and it may be more, I can't add, and represents our best opportunity to build both affordability and growth. So I personally am saying that I wish to see a mashup of the two. And that would be eliminating parts of what is, probably the loop that goes down to 126, because I think that's going to be extremely difficult. And keep the easily more buildable, viable, and owner-ready-to-sell components of AA and look at the MMV property as well. And then decide how to get the rest of the acres we need by carving some segments out in AA. Thank you.
Anything to say or I can talk?
I'm not ready yet.
We do have to go home at some point.
I will make it. I'll say something.
Okay.
Don't do that when people are...
It's not over till Michael says something. Do you want to say something or I can?
I can, I can go.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I, I know I'm one of the newbies here on City Council. I knew this decision would come before me and I knew it would be a really important one. I appreciate all the thought and brain cells that were put into this. And I want to make some acknowledgements before getting into my decision. I want to acknowledge our engaged community for their valuable input on where this town should grow over the next 20 years. We're thinking far ahead. This isn't going to happen overnight. This is a plan for growth over the next 20 years. Probably at this point, we're over 100 pieces of written input without open houses on the topic plus uncounted public comments at meetings, and I appreciate our community for all their input. I appreciate those that volunteered on the steering committee, working for over a year with our expert consultants to understand the land use laws, reviewing the data and analysis, considering the available land options, including consideration of potential MMV rezone, and for completing their goal of making a final recommendation. I acknowledge staff for answering my unending questions. And I also acknowledge the property owners that took the time to meet with me and share with me their rich history with this community and all their contributions to date and their vision for their land. My decision is based on the following. One, I believe a diligent analysis and decision-making process was conducted by the steering committee and expert consultants to determine a recommended area. I believe the planning commission took their time to support this SE recommendation, reviewed it thoroughly. My decision is also based that I feel there's been ample public testimony opportunities. Also considering the Department of Land Conservation and Development advising that a UGB amendment application that includes MMV property while its rezone is under appeal will be remanded. Understanding that a delay of the process will risk the city having to redo their analysis, resulting in additional consultant costs, staff, and volunteer time and taking away from other critical city projects. In addition to the DLC stating that the city could initiate another UGB expansion in the future with proven need and with the understanding that affordable housing is possible within the recommended area of Concept AA. Also understanding that they are open to talking with Habitat for Humanity. I know they've spoken with Bridge Meadows as well. Therefore, I support the submission of the land use application as is, the resolution as is for the area proposed by the steering committee, Concept AA.
Thank you. I can go ahead if you want.
I think I'll go ahead.
Okay.
There's no right or wrong answers here. We have to make a really tough decision as a city council. I've been doing this for seven years. And this is, this is as hard as it gets. This is the future of our, of our town. I was on the steering committee. The mayor was on the steering committee. We know how hard they worked on this recommendation of A.A. And we did our best to not interject in that process because we want an engaged public. We asked for an engaged public. When I was mayor a couple of years ago, we, we, that, those councils, before a couple of you got here, no offense, we talked about not just meeting the demands of Goal One and reaching out to the public, but smashing it and maybe even overdoing it a little at the risk of getting too much input and so many diverse opinions. But I think that's a good thing. Somebody up here talked about democracy. The biggest tenet of democracy is having an engaged public who work with and not always agree with public officials or elected officials. And while I appreciate the input from the steering committee, frankly, all the pressure is on the five of us to make this vote. This vote is why we are elected officials. You guys elected us to do, to do this work and make these decisions. There's a couple regrets that I see that are on the table and man, it would have been a lot easier if Mackenzie Meadows Village had gotten the rezone earlier. It's water under the bridge. We, we, I know all of the families involved in that property and I consider them friends. But I also consider friends of the AA properties. I know a lot of people out there. I've been here for 18 years. I know a lot of you guys. And you're all good people. So this is not a personal decision at all. I do want to acknowledge somebody that hasn't been thanked, and that's the county. We asked the county to expedite their look at rezoning this property, MMV property, and they did that. And they went probably faster than any jurisdiction I can think doing similar work. And so I know Commissioner Adair's here. Hi. Thank you for representing our community so well, and thank you for doing what we basically asked you to do. I wish that Oregon Land Watch would do a little more work in trying to get, work with property owners to get their needs satisfied. This is not the only UGB process that we've had in central Oregon that Oregon Land Watch has decided to push back against for reasons that may have been able to be solved way ahead of time. And it's a little disappointing, to be honest with you. I don't object to what you do, but sometimes I kind of don't like how you do it. And it's not personal. I know a lot of people at Oregon Land Watch too. And I just kind of wish that you would learn to play ball a little bit. Because the people that own MMV would love to work with you and help satisfy the needs that you're looking for. And automatically pushing back against the best needs of the community gets, it gets a little old, to be honest with you. That's about all I have to say, except for my decision. I love the points that Gary made. He, he's a fact guy and he went line by line and spelled it all out. I think the community is better off with both MMV and A.A. Maybe with some, removing a little bit of A.A. to make it work. I'm less worried now than ever about the appeal process only because I think that Land Watch may be able to be talked to and say, "Hey, what's your concerns? Let's be collaborative about it." And honestly, I'd like to open up that dialogue with them. But it's really more important for MMV and Oregon Land Watch to come to some kind of agreement. I don't know how you do that. I'm not magic man that could just make it happen. But I'd like to encourage both those two parties, the MMV properties and Oregon Land Watch, to figure it out. And maybe the appeal can be withdrawn if all conditions are met between both parties. I think that MMV and Oregon Land Watch owe it to the community to try and work that out, whatever that is. And I encourage you guys to do so. What I'd like to see is, and I don't know how we do this, kind of what Gary said, I'd love to work, work out the land pieces that everybody can be happy. We're talking, I don't know how many, how many affordable housing units over there and over here. And I just think that that's the best for the community. I don't think it's ever been an either or. I don't think that Sisters Community works either or. We don't do that. We're one community, and I think we can work that out. Again, I'm not the, I've told you guys a lot of times that I'm kind of not the detail guy. I'm a visionary kind of guy, and that's where I'm at right now. I think that, I think there's work to be done by different members of the community, and I think we can make this work. And I think that it's best that we make it work. Because MMV has so many great opportunities. It is, it really is a gift if you look at it like a gift, if you, if you're able to accept gifts. Somebody today, and I don't want to point people out, but they talked about the fire situation in that area. Gary said it really best, the best, when he talked about, we're talking about building hardening. R327 will be onboard before things are built out there. Honestly, if we think that we shouldn't build houses in that part of the forest, we should probably shut down Tollgate and shut down Crossroads too, because there are a bunch of old homes out there that still have shake roofs on them and log cabins, and they're made of wood, and they're in danger too. So I don't think MMV is going to be any more dangerous than Tollgate is, and Tollgate's a little further out. And it's also surrounded by forest, and in fact, they've actually been evacuated how many times over the years because of a fire coming from the west or the south? So to me, that's not really a concern, because I think that what we're trying to do here as a community is to build a safe neighborhood where fires really won't do very well, hopefully. And if we do it right, that's going to be the case. So I'm in favor of morphing AA to include Mackenzie Meadows Village. And hopefully, everything will just work out. I'm not saying it will, but I'd love to try it. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I want to go ahead and thank, like everybody else, I want to really thank staff, a whole bunch of work. The work will continue, also MIG, because we have a whole bunch of work ahead of us as well. I think everybody, you know, I think up until the last, you know, month or so, the excitement and the energy was around the annexation criteria, like, you know, how are we going to codify stuff? How are we going to make sure we're going to get to affordable housing? I want to thank the community for making that their top priority. I can't tell you, like, everybody wants affordable housing. Everybody wants workforce housing. Except for a couple of people, but otherwise, it was the consistent message, you know, no matter where you were coming from on this topic. And I really appreciate that. That says a lot about our community, and I love that. I really want to thank the volunteers on our UGB steering committee and our planning commission. A lot of hours, a lot of dry reading, a lot of presentations, a lot of maps, and a lot of volunteer time. This community doesn't run without volunteers. And very, very much appreciate the time that was dedicated. And I really want to thank the citizens, so many letters, especially the last few days, and we read all of them. You know, we, we take them seriously. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think, I think we, you know, we read all of them. We take them seriously. And, and I just, it's a little time-consuming, however, it's also joyful because it's, it's democracy in action. And I keep telling people, you know, the most important part of my job right now, I think, is to you know, exercise democracy to the best of my abilities and to show people that it still exists in our country. We're still accessible and a community by the people, for the people. And yes, thank everybody for the civility in this process as well. Much appreciated. A few bits and pieces here, maybe addressing a couple of other comments. I think to address Michael's comment about Land Watch, you know, in my, I don't know how much of us had got an opportunity to talk with them. And I don't want to speak on their behalf, however, the message that was conveyed to me was that there wasn't really any room for compromise, because it really wasn't kind of about the details. It was kind of a bigger picture issue. And so again, I don't want to speak for them, but that was kind of the, you know, the, the message I got, because I understand where you're coming from, you know. I've, you know, I moved here over 40 years ago and have seen all sorts of developments and, and pushback. And I've seen, I've seen it all. I've seen it all in this county. I come to this decision with decades of, of growth and UGB expansions and annexations all over this county that I've, I've experienced. So please, you know, nobody take that lightly when I come into this process. I think my, my main issue with the MMV property, I have a few, but my main issue is not so much it's a wildfire risk, it's an evacuation risk. And everything is a wildfire risk. Everything in the city is a wildfire risk, everything around the city, no matter if it's trees or grass, anything. Former firefighter, I'm going to tell you that till the day I die. But the, the issue that keeps coming up in conflagration after conflagration is the ability to get people out safely and the ability to get response vehicles in safely. And that has been a hitch in many communities. That has killed many people. Overwhelmingly elderly, overwhelmingly handicapped people. And I study this. This is what, you know, my husband and I do for work. So I cannot ignore the challenges of that property with egress and ingress in an emergency situation, especially to the degree that that property has been proposed to be built out. And put a pin on that. And put a pin on that. Um, the, the process, you know, and I have also talked to District Ranger Ian Reed. Um, I'm sure he'd be here, but he's not allowed to attend public meetings right now, um, unfortunately. And, and about the process and, and there, there is a, a process, you know, for, you know, using a road. Needs to be upgraded. A developer would have to pay for that. Um, the bigger hurdle, I, I think, and he kind of also felt, I'm not gonna speak for him, however, um, I think is ODOT. And, um, you know, ODOT has, um, has their ways and their reasons, but they're, they can be, um, challenging to work with, especially in an expedient manner. And I, I can already envision just enough from previous situations here and other places. You know, they, they have their reasons of where they want access points and where they don't want access points. And I think that is going to be a inexpensive and time-consuming hurdle. Um, everything in development is expensive and time-consuming. I understand that. But I think that has not been, um, researched or fleshed out. Um, and I, I think because of the arguments of, hey, we're shovel ready, we're ready to go. It's, it's just, it's not, I don't believe that. Um, I, and my, uh, my overarching desire through this whole process, and it has been a process since I've started in this council almost five years ago, was that you need to get housing built. And I am still a believer in the path of least resistance in this process right now. And I feel that choosing A, A is the path of least resistance that gets us to a place where we can start turning shovels and getting housing built quicker than any other option. Um, nobody has a crystal ball. Nobody knows that. Um, we always have those wild cards of, you know, economies going up and down, things like that. Um, however, I, um, uh, frustrated, I, I, I love research, I love analysis, but I also hate analysis paralysis. And this has been five years of this and there still has not been one house built. And I really need to get this process going. We were, I think generous with, um, the MMV team on, on, um, punting a few times and, you know, we are a few months definitely behind in this process where we could have been. Um, but we, you know, we allowed, um, th- their team, um, to kind of, you know, try to work through their, um, rezoning process. Um, you know, which, which came, came too late, uh, in this, this whole thing. Um, um, so to that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna support A point A. However, I, I want to speak to the MM, MMV team. Um, I truly appreciate and, and believe your sincerity and your desire to, you know, provide for the community and provide for all of these groups that you've, you've worked with along the way. Um, and I, as, as Councilor Pellerin mentioned, I, I believe, I, I feel like, um, this is by no means the end of the road. I, I think there could be some other options. Um, I know that there's been talk about urban reserve. I know that, you know, this is a priority in the governor's office in, in Salem, you know, to get a, as much housing going as we can. And I, I feel like we're in an environment that if something is going to change in that regards, it's going to maybe happen within the next year or two or three. Um, so that maybe um, part of that parcel can come in or something like that. Um, and I, I feel that, um, maybe to borrow a little bit of, of Michael's, um, comments that I think there's, um, some more discussion to be had and, and some, maybe some more creative solutions. Um, however, I think at this, with the MMV team, and again, thank you very much. And I don't want to disengage. I, I still wanna keep the conversations going cuz I think there's some solutions that have just never been discussed or brought up in this process. Um, so, but I just, the, 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 the sound of a clock ticking in my ears is getting louder and louder. You know, we, we've also, three of us worked on the process for the Northwest Housing Alternatives. Um, you know, low income, affordable apartment building. And that has taken years and hopefully they will be turning shovels on that in a couple of months. Um, but it's, it's been a frustrating process. Government is frustrating that it's so slow sometimes. And we do not want it to be slow, especially when we need so desperately so much more housing, um, for the people in our community. Um, so um, just because I, I feel like, could be wrong, but I feel like this is the path of least resistance that I, my preferences for just moving ahead with the UGB Steering Committee's recommendation with A point A.
Can I give you an opportunity to change your mind?
Uh, no.
Okay.
For clarification, we were given, uh, three options.
Mm-hmm.
So I would ask Michael and Gary if you can put a, a date to, to some of this discussion that you want or a deadline to some of these discussions, um, to align with one of these three options that were before us or a fourth option. How much time?
Um, that's really hard to say because, um, we're not the ones working on it. You know what I mean? Um, it may be. I, I think I'm comfortable not even really putting a time on it other than a general couple of months or something. I think that there are some dates we have to worry about. Um, there was a time when I was pretty steadfast, um, in the last couple of months. But I was gonna never really again thinking about another delay or another thing. And, um, I think that the MMV people have done a lot of good work about these different options with different groups. And they're moving, they've been moving forward in a way that, that just makes me want to include them in any way I can. And, um, so I'm hoping that Land Watch will talk to them and not just shut them out. Um, obviously, that, no team's guaranteed in the appeal process. Um, and it could go forever. It could literally go for years. And, you know, maybe at some point in the future, I would have to reconsider and punt. Um, but I think that, I think that the option of having both the major players and, I should just say, major families that live in this town. Maybe not exactly in this process, but I, because they're community members that I've been associated with on both sides of town. I think that they've earned the right to have a little more time. And I can't quantify that time really well cuz I don't know what the best way it's gonna move forward. Um, so I don't have a good answer on the timeframe itself. Um, but I would love to, I'm a big believer in letting the public do a lot of this detail work. Because we're up here not doing detail work. We're, we're making judgments. And I hate to put a judgment on this because they're still working on it. And maybe, you know, maybe Land Watch will come back and say, nope, we're just never gonna change our mind and we're putting the appeal in. And if, if I'm told that, then maybe I can rethink what's going on. Um, but at this point, I haven't been told that. At least I haven't been told that. So I'd like to keep the door open and see if we can't get both of these, um, ideas together at the same time. It, to me, if MMV loses a little bit of momentum because of A, the appeal and B, for what Jen said about, excuse me, the mayor said, sorry, um, about evacuation routes and fire safety. It's a concern. I'm not saying it's not a concern. Everything we do up here is public safety. It's the number one thing. When, you know, whether it's the, the current mayor or me as the former mayor, the worst thing that we would ever want to happen is the flat fire again, or anything close to it, let alone paradise or anything like that. The worst thing. We don't want that. We don't want that to happen while we're here. So please never think that we're not thinking about public safety. We always are. It's all, every crosswalk in town is a point of danger. It's a point of safety too, to try and get across the street, but it's also a point of danger. We think about that kinda stuff. So it's a concern. I, I understand that concern. But I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to to settle for A, A, A point A by itself because I think that there's still opportunity out there to work it out. And it fits within the timeframe that Community Development Directors laid out for us.
And, and my answer to the question is, I guess, you know, I can't, in my mind, give up on the idea of two distinct high-quality sets of housing by two distinct high-quality developers in this town. And an A or a B or a C or a D or an F or an AA decision eliminates one. And I think that's the biggest mistake we can make as a council.
I don't
This isn't a one-year process. This isn't a two-year process. This is a twenty-five or thirty-year process. And I know what you're, I know that we could go back in and try to change it later on with, um, a, a second amendment, but the simple reality is this is the time to strike. The iron is hot. The players are here. And, um, and I frankly think that there is opportunity. I don't know. I mean, I realize that I can't speak for Land Watch. I have a lot of respect for what they do. I've worked with them in other areas. And I'll tell you that sometimes their decisions are based on bigger things than us. And this decision of MMV may have nothing to do with Sisters. It may have to do with some other bigger need that's happening in other parts of the state and, and not wanting to set a precedent or requirement. And I get that. But I also think that, I like what you said, that maybe it's an opportunity to have some discussions and see. I don't know. I mean, and, and I, I just wanna say one more thing. I'm, I'm actually, a lot of respect for some of the members that I know of the Steering Committee. And I'm trying to how I wanna say this. It's unfortunate that I'm getting a feeling that it means I disrespect them when I say these things. I'm worried not about, I don't wanna disrespect you, but I'm worried about people who cannot live here. I'm worried about the future of this community in terms of its viability. And so I'm willing to kick the can down the road as far as we can kick the dang can. And I know that doesn't feel comfortable to some people at this, this table. So I guess if you want a date, I'll say it's right there under B, April fifteenth. Only because that's sort of the drop dead date. So maybe back it up two, three or four weeks so that we have time as a group to have discussion and talk about what happens if we, if we move, if this movement and there's a chance that things are happening properly, then do we take the risk or not take the risk? But making a decision today, where we have time left on the clock that's ticking in my mind too, I think is a huge mistake. And, uh, I think it's a disservice to the future of this community. I won't be here to see it probably. Why would we lie? I mean, I'm not young. Don't think anything. Um, and so I guess I look around this room and I wanna see in this twenty years from now, if I could sit in this room, I'd wanna see a bunch of young faces, children and, and people. And I'd wanna see a school district that's vibrant and viable. I'd wanna see a community that's growing and living. And I think we need both those proposals in order to ensure that happens. That's what, that's where I'm. So I guess I would say April fifteenth cuz that's the date that is the drop dead date. And maybe we back it up to March fifteenth to give time for us to have that final discussion and move forward. But I think at this stage, it's, it's up to us. If this group votes three to two, then that's democracy. We do that. Uh, if they're both, we do four to one. So I know one vote. Um, that's fine too. But I am unwilling to walk away from the opportunity that MMV presents us just because it's inconvenient or because we, we were concerned about egress. I'm not convinced that ODOT's gonna let us dump a road onto one twenty-six. We're assuming they will. I'm not sure that, that one of the watershed councils, some other group is gonna really object to us putting a bridge over Whitechis Creek. It's been a lot of work done on Whitechis Creek restoration. We're making a lot of assumptions on both of these. AA and Mackenzie. And I don't think we can single one out and say, this one is a greater risk than that one. Because I also would argue that AA without another exit is every bit as dangerous in a fire situation, especially if it gets to those grasslands, as MMV is. Trying to get everybody else onto locusts, get them through the roundabout, get them out. So I mean, it's, it's, to me, they both have that equal risk. And I don't do what you do for a living. So I, I'm no expert on that. But the reality is that I think that is equally an issue for either opportunity. So I'd say March fifteenth. There, how's that sound?
And I just wanna remind you, in the UGB Steering Committee, there were younger members of our community. There was, you know, a woman who graduated from high school. There was a member who was also a renter.
Why is this, why is this a concern?
Gary, is it the mayor's turn to talk?
I'm just saying, why is it a concern?
He did talk over me.
No, I'm just saying that you, you're implying that I'm not that, that, I think the thing that frustrates me is the fact that if, if you dare to say, I think we should do something different, that somehow we're disrespecting that group. And, and I'm, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying that we need to think about the future of the community ten to fifteen years from now, and that involves both. So that's all I'm saying. And I'm sorry if I talk over, but I
Gary, at this point, you are disrespecting the mayor. You're, you, you, you need to let her talk when it's her turn.
Okay. The, I just wanted to point out that there were specifically people on that committee who were younger because they have hopefully way more skin in the game, um, you know, than a lot of us, um, up here. Um, that, you know, their, their perspective was really valuable in, in the process because they really saw things differently. You know, there's somebody who grew up here and graduated from high school and, you know, struggled to move back. Uh, there's somebody, you know, was a renter, um, can't afford to buy. And, uh, you know, we don't hear from that community very much because they're busy working their asses off and raising their kids. Um, and, and here we are, kind of a select group in here discussing this topic tonight. So, um, to, I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, their, their voices, um, don't get to rise up as much. Um, but we did make an effort to include them in this process.
We, we asked for that, there's no doubt. But at the same time, uh, recommended things from our advisory committees are not carte blanche. We have to take them exactly like they're presented to us. We're the, we're the elected officials that are voted to task, that were the ones that are tasked with making the final decision. That recommendation was done in September or late August. I can't remember which one. July. Things have changed and I'm not trying, again, I'm not disrespectful to the people on the committee. Um, I know them all, um, care for them all, enjoyed working with them. It was great. Um, but I'd, I'd like to think that, uh, being up here means we can speak our mind and, you know, if we have to make adjustments, we have to. And we feel like we have to, we should. Sometimes it's not gonna be that way. And, um, so it's great. It's all good.
Cheryl, did you get your questions answered or do you?
Yes, thank you, Michael and Gary. I, I did have some additional thoughts. Thanks. Okay, um, I think in, in, I love this collaboration, by the way. Thank you, everybody. Regarding the safety and egress, um, I'd done some research, um, after, regarding the FEMA report after the Marshall, the tragic Marshall Fire in Colorado in regards to the distance of egress based on, uh, the diagonal distance of a property. And, um, with just the two egress points at Mackenzie Meadows, that's a grave concern. It does not meet the requirements of FEMA in
It does not meet the requirements of FEMA in terms of. Egress points being separated from each other far enough. When we look at concept AA, um the information we got out of our workshop was showing all of those access points. Uh that surround that area. So I feel more comfortable with that. Uh so that's just my point on uh the egress egress and safety. And then I want to talk about appeals. And getting back to your comment, Michael, thank you. Um we've received correspondence and a letter from uh Bill Willetts, Mr. Willetts, and. It has been made clear that if tonight we don't find middle ground with MMV. Then they will file an appeal against a decision if it was to go uh with AA. So when we talk about asking Land Watch. Maybe to reconsider their appeal. We may have to consider asking MMV to reconsider an appeal of AA. So it feels like this. Yeah, it's 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 very frustrating and uh. Uh but I just wanted to get that on record here and think about that. When we talk about the potential of appeals. Regardless of our decision.
Fair fair enough. I mean.
Is it okay if I speak? Ready? Okay. Um I I do want to say that I I did meet with Land Watch this week. I think I think the mayor had met a couple of weeks ago. And um it is my understanding that this is not just about our project. It is about something bigger. And that it is not just about a negotiation um with um details within the Sisters community.
I I want to address that afterwards.
Well, I I understand that, um but that's that's my understanding um of their position. Um and so I'm not convinced that that um. A local negotiation would would move us forward. I. If everything had gone differently from the beginning. I, you know, I would have embraced today MMV coming in. But I think, you know, I'm with the mayor of going down. The path that we are on today. And I, you know, I I am also confident that if this is not working. We have. We have connections with the legislature. We have connections with the governor to help us figure out how we do this. How to re bring in one, you know, more land. And I I just don't. Feel like. This is about either or. I it's it. I don't like those words. I feel like that is. Um like we're picking sides. This is not about picking sides. This is about. Being at a point where it's time to move forward. And and that's, I I really just don't want to leave here. Having anyone think that we're picking sides or that I'm picking sides, because that's not what this is about for me. So.
I'm going to address Oregon Land Watch one more time. Your comment that it does has nothing to do with Sisters makes it worse, to be honest with you.
Me too.
Um I. You know, I think it's great that there's organizations out there that are for the environment and, you know, that's awesome. But to appeal a program that's in a little town of Sisters of three thousand people, thirty-five hundred. Because of something outside the city, I I find that incredibly wrong.
May I just clarify?
Sure.
It it's not that it has nothing to do with Sisters. It's just that it it it's it's a bigger. That that includes some of the things that are going on here.
I understand. It's a it's a strategy kind of thing and I get it. Um that's how the world works, but I would challenge Oregon Land Watch to rethink that whole thing. Because Sisters is a very special place. And we'd really like you guys to be part of it and part of the solution, not part of the road blocking and the legalities and. You know, it's. It's not collaborative. It's just not collaborative. Appealing something just because. It might set a standard somewhere else. I think we could do the opposite and set up a standard of collaboration in a little town like ours and try and get something done. With citizens. You guys are all sitting in the same room. You could you could go out in the lobby and talk about it if that was helpful. I think that. Unfortunately. If you choose A point A only, you are picking sides. I think that I would love to rely on the people here that are before us and let them. Give them a little more time and let them work it out and see if they can't find a way to make it happen. And that includes MMV. That includes eight point eight. It includes Land Watch, any other groups that might want to get involved. I'm gonna. I'm going to side with. Human decency and humanity. I know that sounds pretty grandiose and stuff, but I I. I just want to give them more time to work it out. I think. We've got a little bit of time, not a lot. Maybe something, maybe a miracle will happen. Who knows? I I see no reason to slam the door shut. It's not going to get housing any faster by. Shutting the door tonight. I just don't think that that's the case. And I think that there are people in who live in the A point A area of town. That don't mind waiting another. I don't know, a few months, if that's even possible. I think they're fairly supportive of MMV, to be honest with you.
Um Cheryl, did you get the, you got the answers to your questions? And are what that you were asking earlier?
Yes.
And are, I guess we're kind of at a point where um I'm wondering if you have a. Particular path you would like to take. If you were looking to change your your path tonight.
I don't believe so. Think I have some more comments that I'm hoping will change someone else's path. When we talk about this additional time. In hopes that Central Oregon Land Watch will drop an appeal. Just say that happens. Say that happens. Then where are we? Then we have to make a decision of. Which land are we taking out of AA and which land are we going to be putting in from MMV? If that was ultimately. The goal of having this appeal lifted. So we have to consider that additional time as well. Again, as I said earlier. I wholeheartedly support this going back to the steering committee if we make a change to what they have proposed. After all their work for over a year.
If nobody's changing positions, one of the three of you can make a motion at any time and. We'll be okay with that.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen as presented with UGB Steering Committee recommendation.
I second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Um you want to do a roll call to keep it clean or?
Sure.
Mayor Letts.
I.
Council President McDougal.
I.
Counselor Breeden.
No.
Counselor Ross.
No.
Counselor Pellerin.
Yes, I.
Okay. The motion passes. And I want to thank um everybody up here, everybody in the audience, everybody in this process. And again, I do not think, and I don't think anybody up here. Feels that um in regards to the MMV team that this is. Uh the end or a door closing. I think there's more. I think it's not necessarily. Land Watch and them talking. I I think there's more conversation I think that we can have um as a city. Um with them about some options that I I um never heard brought to the table. Um so.
I think there's ways to get creative that we haven't thought of yet.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think this moving forward at this point closes that door. I I think there's some other options. So um it is definitely not an either or. It is not a um. Shutting the door and and a refusal of working with them, because I think that there is an interest across the board um to work with them. So. Um I wanted to make that statement very clear in this process. But I want to get housing built. As soon as we can. So thank you for everybody. Thank you, staff. Thanks for the um the community. And we will move on to our next item tonight. We have two more items tonight on our agenda. If there's anybody that would. Like to leave at this time and not watch the rest of the meeting, please do.
It's a date or a peanut butter. They're really good.
I'm married.
Yeah. Waiting for that.
It was a weak moment. Today.
I'm on my third pepper. And that was good.
All right, thank you. Who are you? And next up, we have the West Side Pump. West Side Pump Station Design Engineering Change Order number two uh with Paul Bertegna.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this is brought before you as part of our phase two of the West Side Project, Pump Station Project. Phase one, we uh got about ninety-nine percent done last night. Uh we got the tie-in done on Jefferson Locust and we have a couple of. Things still to be installed on that force main, but we're, like I said, ninety-nine percent there. So that original uh engineering for that was caught in the change order number one, which I brought to you. Uh in September. And this one will be number two, and this is for the actual pump station itself, which is. Very intensive, uh a lot of submittals, requests for information. Uh very detailed, a lot of subcontractors. Working for them, electrical engineers, structural engineers, control engineers, uh third-party inspectors. So that's why you see the high price tag. It's it's a complex project and. Uh HHPR, which they do this type of work um. Came up with this not to exceed. So so I brought in front of you today. Uh. So we are calling this change order number two, just to be consistent with the first one. What you'll or what we'll actually see from BLJ is a uh amendment to the original contract. So.
So Paul, I made a note to myself to. Just to confirm, this change order is not because of overages, but instead it's part of the the process of how you handle large projects.
We wanted to split it up and really make sure that we were good with, you know, the original design and. So we didn't have a bulk that we were eating out of. We have those thresholds, those not to exceeds as we go through the project.
Cool. Thank you.
Paul, the what's the purpose of the last page, the Suzanne general rates? Is that just for comparison or?
No, they are the electrical subcontractor.
Oh, they're the electrical. And then what's on? Page three. Where those rates are at the bottom there. What is that? What work is that for?
The total fee estimate.
Uh no, the the hourly rate, sorry.
That's for for HHPR. I think that's a different company.
So HHPR is the prime. And then they just folded in Sazan's uh. Engineering into essentially task number six point one.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any more questions? All right, somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve contract change order CCO number two with Harper House Peterson Reggelli's. Incorporated HHPR for the West Side Pump Station Design Engineering Contract. In an amount not to exceed one hundred nineteen thousand ninety dollars and authorize the city manager to execute the change order.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Great, thank you.
You. And then moving on to item C, Edgington Transmission Main Design.
So exciting. We're getting this project uh to full design. Uh we have made quite a bit of progress uh since early spring. When we contracted with Anderson Perry to do the environmental uh. Preparation work for the NEPA analysis and by the Forest Service that was concluded. At the end of the summer and then we got the official notice to proceed at the end of September from the Forest Service, which is. Huge. I mean, we should frame that, actually.
And they and they and and a big thanks to them for squeezing that in before they had to close.
Huge thanks to them for doing that. Yeah, yep. And so. We uh we got a cost estimate from BECON, our city engineer uh to do this type of work. Uh part of the engineering turn or team is Mike Kakavano, who was the previous city of. Uh Redmond Engineer and City of Astoria Engineer. This is what he does, what he likes to do. So it just made sense uh for efficiency and. For cost uh primarily to use the BECON team. And our existing contract has a mechanism in it. Uh since we have a not to exceed threshold in that existing contract that we can add task orders for specific projects. To that existing contract and with this is a task order. Uh to do the Edgington Design uh for. The forty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and also provides a scheduled timeline in that task order as well. Garrett, did I get that?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
Is there an error? Am I just reading wrong? June thirty, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, I saw that too. The last bullet point.
The last bullet point, uh final bid doc, the design must be completed with final bid documents by June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Should that be twenty twenty-six?
It should be, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Scribner.
Our hope is to, or my hope is to expedite this. Uh and get this done in the next, you know, three or four months. Since we got the preliminary line layout already established. We still have to work with ODOT because there will be a crossing of Highway two forty-two. That we'd love to cut and patch, but uh there'll be a discussion about boring like we did out there. So. More to be determined with engineering on that, but. The idea is just to get this line in as soon as possible.
Who do we need to talk? Do we need to talk to somebody? Do you need a public official to go knock on the door?
We need to have that discussion with them first.
Okay.
Yeah, as staff level.
All right.
Yep.
Just let me know. I'm a little fired up today.
So Paul, I I ask these questions not because I don't want to see your documents, which are awesome. But I just I like to understand the process. So is this partially coming to us? I mean, I see it's already budgeted. And so does it come to us because of the amount of the contract? Because it's over something that Jordan could just go ahead and and sign. Okay, thank you.
So the twenty-five thousand dollars is that threshold to where we need to get approval from council?
Thank you. Thank you. You do make nice documents, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Other than getting the dates right, but.
Yeah. But I can understand.
We'll work on that, but thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve task order number one. To the existing professional service agreement with BCon LLC in the amount not to exceed forty thousand six hundred twenty dollars. For design and construction administration services for the Edgington Transmission Main Project. And authorize the city manager to execute the task order.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sitting through all that, Paul.
Again, all those projects we've been wanting to do for a long time and.
We should have made you A and E and made them C, but you know.
Yeah, all right, I was talking, but that's okay.
Oh, you wanted to be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wanted to see you guys.
Okay, good. That's very nice.
Okay, uh Mayor, Council Business, oh, I'm sorry, response to prior meeting, public comments.
None of CGB related.
Oh, okay. And we already had all our staff comments, so we can move on to Mayor Counselor's business.
Excuse me.
Wants to cough your way through it or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I had any meetings the last two weeks.
Did you want to talk about the Regional Business Alliance? Event that you and I went to.
You can talk about it.
Okay. Did you not?
I blanked out on it.
Okay.
So I wasn't prepared to talk about it, so please, why don't you talk about it for me? Thanks.
My calendar here, oh.
That was a good meeting, so I will say that.
Oh, okay. I can I can start um. Michael and I attended the Regional Business Alliance. Uh, summit, I think it was a summit. Redmond's and uh a group that's trying to just have a uh create a unified voice around um economic developments. For Central Oregon and Salem. You know, so it was uh some speakers, um a lot of very foreboding. Um, forecasts of. You know. Public budgets going way down, um in light of everything going on right now, um. Some challenges um in the business environment in Oregon with um various. Uh, regulations and taxes and things like that, um sometimes, you know, well-meaning but not well-executed and 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 things like that, so. You know, it was it was a mix of people, there was um, you know, our. A number of our state representatives were there, um. Local city electeds and then people from the business community all around Central Oregon, the tri-county area, so that was a good event. Uh, yes, Hallow- Halloween was great in town, um. Whoever did the weather, that was great too, wasn't, you know, uh for Halloween, it's usually like snowing or something, so. That was not bad weather, um so thanks again to staff for doing that. Um, and helping with the the trunk or treat with SPRD. We had the city wildfire um beating um this week as well and uh I think um. A a lot of updates and. Just trying to think of kind of what stood out, I I think again. Um, a big thanks to, you know, Matt Martin for hosting those events, there's always somebody in the room that says, wow, thanks for. Doing this because it's it's the one time a lot of these people in this line of work get together in the same room. Get to talk and share and and they're they're still really happy to be able to do that, so. Um, and obviously, you know, anybody's welcome to come to those from council, so. Um, yeah, I I forgot, yeah. Well, I thought you were coming, Michael, because you were in the off, you're in the lobby, but you you went on to do bigger things, I imagine.
I have, yeah, I just happened to be in here at the same time.
Yeah, so that was good, uh Superintendent's Coffee um was today, this kind of monthly update. Um, from the school district and same thing, budgets are getting. Um, you know, cut at the state level or or getting or they're. Uh, every government agency, basically the state has been being told it's, you know. Draw up a budget with deep cuts, it doesn't mean that they're coming, but they're coming. Um, you know, so a lot to worry about there, at least you felt economically we were we were okay here, um. You know, however, uh that that's just a message that no matter where you go and what agency you talk to is. Budgets are getting slashed unfortunately, so. Uh, something for us to keep in mind as as many of our partners might start to financially struggle here in the next year or two. Um, Counselor Ross and I um had a set up a meeting um with um Fan, Family Access Network. Representatives across the street and just to kind of talk about what they do. And, you know, obviously we have a couple of um usually a couple of uh. Um, grants that we we give to them, like the 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 shower tokens. And I think something else. Utility assistance, that's right, exactly, thank you. You know, so they're thankful for that, I mean, they they do a lot of amazing work, you know, their job is is really to work um primarily with with children and and families. Um, though they will, you know, assist who they can and they're really trying to, you know, get people to definitive services. And. You know, but they but we did have some interesting discussion points about some some things and and the city that we might be able to help out with. Um, that might help help a lot of their clients, so.
Cool.
More to come on that. Um, and then, um, you know, I was, uh, can't remember for sure if this was everyone or not, I was appointed to the governor's. Fire Service Policy Council. As I was recruited by League of Cities, but I ended up taking a seat um as the at-large. Um, person, so I, unlike the other committee members, I represent like four and a half million people in the state, so that makes my position a little difficult to. Reach out to everybody and get their feedback, but I'll do my best, um.
You gotta meet with all of them.
Yes, I do, I do, I got a couple of months on the next meeting. And again, uh, you know, budgets are getting cut and. Uh, fire service needs, um, you know, fire service is obviously the more structural side and and the EMS, you know, medical response. Uh, you know, side of of fire and. While, you know, budgets are getting cut and their needs are growing and, you know, EMS is. Uh, your medical calls are eighty percent of the workload, basically, um though they do not get um reimbursed for most of that and so. You know, that is while they are happy to provide that service, that is a big financial hurdle um across the state. You know, and a lot of these districts are still, you know, volunteer-based, things like that, so. Um, but it but seems like a good team and we're working a little bit on the kind of strategic plan for the next couple of years, so. Um, more to come on that, but kind of honored to to be able to represent um. Kind of the municipal viewpoint and the partnership that we have with our prior district and. Um, excited to be, you know, part of that, so I think that's all I had, thank you.
I attended the fire resiliency tour downtown. Uh, and uh I thought it was really informative and. I really miss walking through town, you know, something I need to do more of. Um, you really see a lot more than you do when you drive through. I appreciated the input in regards to some things that we could do in terms of our hardening code. I also attended uh one of the uh serving our seniors. Listening sessions, if you recall, they were a community grant recipient. And uh they're putting on uh several of these listening sessions. To speak with seniors and hear what their needs are so that those could be documented and hopefully we can move forward. With potentially trying to find some solutions. Um, some things are actually, I think. Very doable, for example, um some seniors that attended, uh they're low income. And uh they're home, they're housebound. But. They could use um the nugget, the nugget has so much valuable information for them. And all they need is a way to get it. So if it's, you know, through a subscription. Um, donation or something, um so these are some of the ideas that are being gathered through this and and I think they're they're. It's a great listening session, I'm happy to see SOS doing this. I also attended the Hospice of Redmond presentation that I asked them to come to the library and present and they did. That was around aging in place. But they had some great information and SOS is hoping to have them come back in January. Um, I want to make an announcement about the Bend Pops Orchestra, if you haven't heard about them. We have five musicians here from Sisters that make up the seventy-five musicians in this orchestra.
Do you know one of them?
I know a couple of them, um, yes, my husband. Uh, plays the trombone, um but the youngest member in the orchestra is fifteen years old and is. A student at Sisters High School. Uh, the oldest is ninety-three.
It is also a student.
Yeah, also. No, that was my husband, okay, um, these concerts are free and they're. It's a fall holiday concert and it's beautiful music to sit there and listen to this orchestra. Uh, November twenty-second, Ridgeview High School, which is a beautiful high school, if you haven't been to their auditorium, it's amazing. At two o'clock and then the next day, November twenty-third at Caldera High in Bend. Also at two o'clock, you can go to bendpops dot orchestra or bendpops dot org for more information, again, free. Go, okay, and then finally I met with several community members. Uh, Council McDougal and myself met with Kathy Degendorfer to hear more about Bridge Meadows with you, which you heard mentioned tonight. Which is a a wonderful nonprofit to put together foster families and seniors in a in a community, a collaborative community. Um, and they've got three of those neighborhoods that they've established so far and hopes are. Someday, maybe even here in Sisters. Thanks.
So it's free, so you don't have to pull strings to get tickets?
No, for the concert? No. And there's free coffee and cookies.
I have I have attended a.
The mayor was there, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh what does your friend play?
Violin.
The violin, yeah, the violins are beautiful.
Gary, do you have? And Michael, you're still good?
Yeah, I'm still good.
Okay. All right. Uh, with that, I will um. I will ask. Jordan, um, do we have? Deficient need to meet an executive session or is there a desire to do that amongst us or is that something we could or should postpone?
Um, I recommend a brief one, if possible.
Okay. Okay. All right, well then I will adjourn uh this meeting and we are adjourning to executive session. Um, the city council will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two E to consider real property transactions. City council will not be returning to open session following the executive session, only representatives of the news media and designated staff. Will be permitted to attend the executive session, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the sessions as announced, no decision will be made during the executive session. Thank you.
Sorry, not that.